Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dance, lore and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness, in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,731st meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2024, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It is being moved by councillor Dixon, seconded by councillor Givney, that the minutes of the 4,731st meeting of council held on the 23rd of April, 2024, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. I would like to call on Mr Peter Paulson, who will address the chamber on flash flooding in Orient Road Park Yoronga. Please proceed, Mr Paulson, you have five minutes.
Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you today about a flood report that I've submitted for Orient Park Yoronga. We've had issues there with flash flooding for many years. The problem's been in 2003, 2002, 2003, one of the landowners filled in the main waterway and we've had problems ever since. Orient Park is about 25,000 square metres and it's the main waterway to the river for the western catchment in Yoronga and it covers about 80 hectares. What's happening is in real heavy rain, the water backs up and it can't get away through the steel pipes that the owner of 133 Hydro has fitted, their two 1,200mm steel pipes. They should have been 1,800ths at least, like they are under the corso, and that acts as a choking effect, plus they fill the block about four metres. Now, this was all done between 2002, 2003, no approvals whatsoever. And now we're at a stage where, you know, the community is, it's sort of renewing, there's a lot of young people there with kids, it's a great community and, you know, there's water hell trapped in Orient Park about a metre deep all year round. Because of the blockages that are there now and the way these pipes have been constructed, you know, if we had a rain event like Bray Park, we would be in serious trouble. And it's just, I have a mate of mine, Bruce McNorton, who's a local civil engineer, retired civil engineer, and he, he's done a mountain of work and he's just been a terrific campaigner for the area. It doesn't even affect him, but he just feels that concerned about it that, you know, something should be done. We've had a lot of correspondence with the Lord Mayor's office and through our council and different things like that, but I'm starting to see now the problem is going to be is that these are two private properties that the blockages are on. And there is some conjecture whether the council can actually do too much at all. There is blockages on the east side of 133 and that are probably a metre high, there on Crown Land, and this was investigated by the council, I think councillor Abrahams, in 2006, and no action was taken because they didn't have enough information or enough evidence to proceed with prosecution, yet Bruce and I have an RTI which shows the owner of the property admitted, he filled it in and did it without approval. So it's a bit hard now to go back 20 years, I know, but I just think houses in our area a million dollars plus, and I just feel that people deserve their properties to be protected. You know, I don't think it's a lot to ask. I know it's difficult and, you know, Bruce and I would be more than happy to help you. We've got, we'd have more information on, Bruce has done a chronology of the last 30 years of the entire area, so we'd have more than the state library. But the thing is, it's, we just keep going nowhere with all these different departments, we just get passed around. One thing's gone for one department, the next, it went to four different departments and we come back to where we started, that took a year, you know. So I believe, Lord Mayor, that you're a, you're an honest man, I believe that, and I remember your acceptance speech that you, you know, you put up, you know, Brisbane was your universe. Well, there's a lot of young people with young families, I saw the passion in your face that night, and I see that same passion in the people in our area, and I think they deserve, I'm really not affected, you know, I'm a builder, if my house floods, I'll fix it up, you know. I'm the last of five generations in my family to live in the area, and I think we can do better. So, you know, I'm here today and I really appreciate, I first applied to come here in 2014, that's how passionate I am about it, and I didn't get a Guernsey then, but to get one today, I think it's, it's an honour. And I think that, you know, we've got to look into this, how, like I was down at 133 the other day with one of your inspectors, and I said, this rock wall is going to collapse, and that's what's going to happen, these walls are going to collapse and it'll flood worse because it'll block the whole waterway. And I said, and Wesley said to me, I'm surprised it hasn't collapsed already. And then the owner, the representative come down and he wasn't happy.
Sorry, Mr Paulson.
That was it.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Paulson, and I'm going to call on councillor Wines, Chair of Infrastructure. Would you care to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and can I thank Mr Paulson for the time, for your time to come and speak with us today, we really appreciate the effort you've gone to in your presentation and to provide us with this report. As you rightly acknowledge, that flooding is a concern in our city, not only in the Yoronga area, but for many communities, and many districts were hit particularly badly in the recent flooding. As such, we take these issues, both flooding generally and also flooding specifically in communities, very seriously, and we recognise the impacts on lower lying areas in suburbs such as yours. While many in the district face increasingly severe weather as part of our, part of climate change and also the fact that Brisbane resides on a flood plain, one of the great challenges of a city like ours is finding the balance between ensuring that there are sustainable and reasonable growth in inner city areas while managing the best possible ways to support that growth with adequate infrastructure that's needed to impact those who are currently resident in those communities. I please note that it's always the intention of this council to get the best possible outcome for residents and that your concerns have been taken on board seriously, and listening to your notes, your speech earlier, this has been a long running, a long running concern of yours, and I appreciate some of the identities you spoke about have not been members of this council for quite some time. So we also recognise that the approvals for this project predate most of the councillors here, if not all of them, and so that has been one of the major issues, that there is a, this is a historical approval that predates many of, or I should say, all of us here. But we have reviewed the application and reviewed the site, and there are ongoing reviews, as you identified. Following some of these reviews, particularly the earliest one, council's compliance and regulatory services branch have conducted investigations into the steel pipes in an attempt to assist the water flow following complaints after their installation. We are always interested in determining whether the outcomes of these changes have affected residents elsewhere. We are grateful for your new report, and we uphold high standards for rigorous development assessments and planning processes on all applications, and can I assure you that they are much more rigorous now than they were 20 years ago. I appreciate this report, and we all do, and we'd like to thank you for taking the time and effort to make it, the time and effort to come and present to us today. I will, I'll make this undertaking to you that this will be properly considered and investigated, and that we'll have compliance officers and the city legal team review this again and to see what, what actions can be taken. I think it's only appropriate and fair that the effort you've gone to be recognised by our, by our organisation. Can I thank you for your time, recognise your ongoing concerns, and we'll hope to be in contact soon with, with further information in regards to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
To you all, and one other thing if I may, you've got a monumental task in front of you this council for the next term of the Olympics, and I just wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mr Paulson, and thank you, thank you for coming in today, and there is a copy of the report there at the front for councillors, so thank you. Question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week's news that Pinkham Bar will be used as a training facility instead of crisis accommodation is a bit of blow for those sleeping rough. Can you please update the chamber on the history of Pinkham Bar, including how it would have helped address Queensland's housing crisis?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, councillor Dixon. Obviously, we all would have seen the news just recently that the federally owned and built Pinkham Bar quarantine facility will not be used for crisis accommodation, but will instead be used for federal police training, and obviously, something my team feels bitterly disappointed and let down by, and I assume that the state government also feels disappointed and let down by, because it was June last year that we made a commitment that we would put money on the table to help activate and make modifications to that facility to make it more suitable to house people, and following that announcement, the state government then committed $10 million for that same purpose. And while obviously it's been a long time since then and there's been frustration with the delay, we had all assumed and sought assurances that things were still progressing. I still, until just a few days ago, had the hope that it would happen and that we would see 500 beds activated for people that need them. Now, I'm very aware that this facility was not built as crisis accommodation, it was built for a different purpose, but I'm also aware that not only are people sleeping in tents that were not built for long term accommodation, they're sleeping in cars that were not designed to have people sleeping in them, but also the state government has people housed in hotels, not flash hotels, very old, rundown hotels with no kitchen facilities in the room, and in fact, I would suggest that many of the hotels that people are being housed in at the moment are substandard compared to the Pinkham Bar accommodation, which is brand new. I, together with councillor Howard, have been inside the facility, I've been inside the rooms, and they are very modern, they are soundproofed, they are air conditioned, and they are certainly better than sleeping in tents and cars, and I would suggest better than some of the hotels that people are being housed in as well. And so for me, it wasn't the perfect option, but it was an option. We also have a situation where the state government is celebrating the construction of 12 homes, and so the most recent media statement from the Minister for Housing about a new housing project, great news, we've built 12 new homes. Well, there are 500 beds here that can be activated, and so if they're celebrating 12 homes, then we should celebrate and take advantage of 500 beds that can be activated. So it is deeply disappointing. This suggestion came out of a meeting that I had with an organisation called Magna Grove Housing, or otherwise known as the Forgotten Women, and it was discussed at that meeting, it was then floated publicly, some people thought it was a good idea, some people didn't think it was a good idea. But progressively over time, as people have become more and more frustrated, as the situation continues to get worse, more and more people have come on board, including major organisations like the Salvation Army, like Q Shelter, who wanted to be involved in helping the government run this facility. And so when I heard the news, like so many people, I was deeply disappointed and demoralised because the reality is, the solutions that are being put forward now, I don't see any that can in a short period of time provide 500 beds. There is nothing like that scale that's available anywhere else, and you can buy hotels here and there, you can build 12 houses, but there's nothing like that scale that can be activated in a relatively short period of time. And so we obviously will continue calling on the federal government to review this decision. Yes, I'm sure the federal police need a training facility, but people need houses, they need roofs over their heads, they need beds more urgently, and we again call on the federal government to reconsider this decision so that we can get state labour government, federal labour government working together for the benefit of the people who desperately need it, the people who are in dire straits and will be grateful to have a roof over their head, even if it is close to the airport, even if it is away from many facilities, it is the feedback that we've heard that there are many, many people out there that would appreciate this facility, and we continue to support its activation as crisis accommodation.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Councillor Collier.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Standards, councillor Sarah Hutton. What real time data has been provided to the general public for the reporting of broken footpaths, playground and park equipment, including the plan for their repair works?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank the councillor for the question. The real time data piece, I will actually have to take on notice and come back to you, but I would like to acknowledge that our council teams are working very, very hard to ensure the safety of our footpaths, and we do that on, if there is a report that is put forward by the public with a broken footpath that is dangerous, we get out there ASAP to fix that broken footpath as quickly as possible. Safety is paramount for our city, and we really want to ensure that our Brisbane residents are cared for in this way, but I will return to the question, I will provide the answer to you later.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Councillor Wolf.
My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, a recent announcement by the Queensland Government showcased their new approval timeframes to build new homes. Can you please update the chamber on this announcement, including any other timeframes you're aware of?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you councillor Wolf for the question. Earlier this month, the state government passed the Housing Availability and Affordability Bill. Whilst the bill has been passed, in true labour fashion, a number of amendments to the planning regulation, ministers' guidelines and rules, and development assessment rules are only now being released and consulted on. According to the state, the bill will support more homes being built faster through a new pathway, the state facilitated development team, who will fast track the assessment of development applications for infill developments that deliver diverse and affordable housing. The Labor Housing Minister wants developers and residents to believe that this new streamlined programme will cut approval times down to just 75 days. However, they fail to mention this so-called fast track team will assess these state facilitated development applications within a minimum of 75 days. So let me repeat that, within a minimum of 75 days, that's 15 working weeks. Madam Chair, I understand why Labour would believe that 75 days seems like a short timeframe. You only have to reflect on other planning amendments the council has sent to the state, either for adoption or for approval to commence consultation. It took the state 218 business days to support the commencement of consultation on the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan. It took the state 286 business days to support commencement of consultation on the qualified state interest amendment Local Heritage Places. This is meant to be a streamlined amendment process that is more efficient due to the limited state interest review. And Madam Chair, do I even need to mention Pinkham Bar, which as the Lord Mayor has indicated, took more than 640 days to elicit a response? These timeframes are frankly not good enough. It is however encouraging to see the state, through their South East Queensland regional plan, delivered in just December last year, committing to streamlining planning scheme amendments as a priority action. Madam Chair, I do not want our opposition councillors to be confused. We are very keen to work with the state government to streamline amendment and approval processes. And while we are keen to improve these pathways in a bid to support more housing, the reality is that the opposition in this chamber continually impede progress on housing. Both the Greens and Labour stand up in this very chamber and talk about how housing is a priority.
Councillors, you've been here long enough, excuse me councillor Collier, you do not call out across the chamber, particularly while another councillor is speaking. Councillor Allen.
Both the Greens and Labour stand up in this very chamber and talk about how housing is a priority, but their actions impede housing.
Councillor Collier. Councillor Allen.
Their actions impede housing and their understanding of the factors impacting the market is abysmal. Time and time again, they have not supported neighbourhood plans within this chamber, they haven't supported planning scheme amendments, and they haven't supported incentives that are aimed at bolstering housing in this city. Since 2016, the Greens/Labor Coalition of Chaos, through their failure to support neighbourhood plans, has put at risk the provision of 30,000 new dwellings. But they do like to redirect the blame to this side of the chamber, so Madam Chair, what are we doing? On average, assessment timeframes for code assessable development applications in the council is 51 business days. This average timeframe was over 2,000 applications over a year. We are certainly performing well in this particular metric, and how does this, and how does this fare in comparison to other capital cities? Brisbane processes development applications 38% faster than Sydney or Melbourne. Our development services team is experienced and agile, and we often implement dedicated teams to focus on key development approvals. During COVID, we implemented the House and Homes Priority Service to stimulate new building and construction. This service prioritised and assessed all small scale domestic code assessable applications. We set 20 business day KPIs and the team was highly successful with an average timeframe of 16 business days. Currently, the Special Assessment Unit is focused on supporting developments that meet the build to rent and housing supply incentives. Both these incentives focus on supporting the construction of more housing sooner. Madam Chair, the Shrima Council will continue to plan for our rapidly growing city in a deliberate and sustainable manner. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Yes, thanks Chair, I have a question. And my question is to Civic Cabinet Chair for City Standards, councillor Hutton. Councillor Hutton, today you've revealed in the ENC report that council will reduce the supply and delivery of concrete for basic maintenance by 20% over the next two years. So my question is, why do you support plans for less footpath and drainage repairs and for hardworking council staff to lose their jobs as a result of your LNP council's cuts to basic maintenance?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to thank the opposition leader for the question. Let's address the facts. Under this administration, we consistently exceed labour spending on footpaths, year after year. Footpath maintenance reconstruction are prioritised on a needs basis, and safety being the number one concern. Our suburbs are a fantastic place to live, work and relax, and ensuring they are walkable, connected and accessible is a crucial part of why we continue to invest in maintenance schedules here. With 5,000 kilometres of footpath across the city, council relies on the eyes and ears of our residents and local councillors to report damaged footpaths to us, in addition to council's inspection and regular maintenance work. To put this into context, if we measured all of the footpaths in Brisbane, they would stretch the entire width of Australia, and we'd still have 1,000 kilometres left to travel to Sydney. Our dedicated council employees work tirelessly to build and reconstruct footpaths, and they do an excellent job. We have crews out on the ground every day across our city, carrying out make safe works where needed and logging them for future repairs. If anyone comes across a footpath that isn't safe, they should report it to council immediately.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, just on relevance, I agree with absolutely everything councillor Hutton is saying, but she's not answering the question, it was why is she supporting a 20% cut in funding for basic maintenance?
Thank you councillor, she's trying to answer the question, and she still has several minutes.
Thank you, thank you Chair. It's unfortunate that the opposition continues to play politics with the essential council services that we have. The safety of residents is the council's highest priority, and that's why this administration has year on year committed to record investment in footpath infrastructure and maintenance. We are committed to ensuring that our safety and accessibility of our footpaths for Brisbane residents remains.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shrima Council continues to roll out our plans to make Brisbane the koala capital of the country. Can you please update the chamber on this morning's announcement helping achieve this goal?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Dixon for the question. Madam Chair, as you know, we take great pride in Brisbane being the most biodiverse capital city in Australia. Our proximity to nature and the opportunity to experience iconic species like the koala in our very own backyards is something that the residents love about Brisbane because there's nothing else like it in the world. That's why we've teamed up with the leading experts from Queensland universities to deliver the Koala Research Partnerships Programme, and now the Koala Recovery and Resilience Project, which the Lord Mayor announced earlier this year. The project demonstrates our commitment to leading the way on koala conservation by taking a proactive approach to boost the population and distribution of this iconic species across Brisbane. And this involves not just monitoring and maintaining existing koala populations, but actively reintroducing koalas to areas of Brisbane where they are no longer found. Through our partnership with the University of Queensland, we've undertaken the first successful re-establishment of koala population at Pooh Corner in Waycol and I, I know that the local councillor is very excited about that project. Several years ago, we undertook a citywide survey of koalas using specially trained detection dogs, and one of the things we realised is that we have a number of reserves, including Pooh Corner and Waycol Bushland Reserve, where there was really high quality koala habitat, but no koalas were present there. So we partnered with the leading experts at the University of Queensland to re-establish koalas in Waycol with our first release in late 2022. I'm pleased to report that the Pooh Corner population is thriving. Just last month, Olive, one of our koalas there, released into the reserve, gave birth to a healthy baby Joey. And earlier this morning, we welcomed another koala to his new home at Pooh Corner. Two-year-old Adam has become the newest release into the reserve following extensive treatment for chlamydia and kidney problems at the Mogul Koala Rehab, Mogul Koala Rehabilitation Centre, and thanks to the fantastic care of the veterinary team at Mogul, who've worked hand in glove with council and the experts at UQ, young Adam now has a fresh start at Pooh Corner. And Adam joins Matilda, Carrie, Lady Jane, Glenda, Chandler, Heaven, Attie, Oscar, and Olive's yet unnamed baby Joey in calling Pooh Corner home. As well as being new to the reserve, Adam is actually a new Brisbane resident, having originally been found in Logan, and like all people, once coming to Brisbane, it's very hard to leave. His health challenges were quite significant, so it was determined by the veterinary staff at Mogul that keeping him close to buy at Waycol was in fact the best option for him. Before his release, Adam was Before his release, Adam was fitted with a tracking collar, which will now allow the team at UQ to closely monitor his movements and help them check up on him to ensure that he stays happy and healthy. And while Adam will hopefully call Pooh Corner home for many years to come, we're also busy looking for more opportunities to expand this programme. A big part of protecting Brisbane's koala population is ensuring we have adequate habitat for our furry and sometimes a little fussy eating friends. And while we continue to welcome new koalas like Adam to Pooh Corner, we'll also be working with the team at UQ to identify other sites which could be suitable for koala reintroductions. So thanks to the initiatives like the Bushland Acquisition Programme and our targeted forty commitment, there's now more opportunity to boost populations and distribution of koalas across the city. The work is in its early stages, but based on the initial assessment, there are several sites that are looking very promising, including Mount Cootha Reserve, Mestalia Road Reserve, Carrawatha Forest and Bayside Parklands. And as part of that, we're also supporting the rollout of a brand-new chlamydia vaccine developed right here in Brisbane by Professor Ken Begley at QUT. The council has committed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the vaccine's registration so that it can be used in a widespread scale by any registered veterinarian. And the vaccine has been proven very safe and effective, and in trials on both captive and wild koalas, it returned a one hundred per cent success rate. So as part of our recovery and resilience project, all koalas going through the reintroduction programme will be vaccinated by experts from UQ using the vaccine developed at QUT. So, Madam Chair, this has been a real team effort and demonstrates the Shriner Council's commitment to the protection of koalas. And while there's lots of more works to do, I look forward to sharing updates on young Adam and his new family at Pooh Corner very, very soon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chairperson for City Standards, councillor Sarah Hutton. Councillor Hutton, how many staff has council currently allocated within the PPI, Programme Planning and Implementation area of council to repair footpaths, parks and playgrounds?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to thank the councillor for the question. I think I'm in the hot seat today. (laughing) People know where I am now, which is fantastic. Unfortunately, I don't have those details on hand, so I will come back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hutton. Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. And whilst councillor Hutton is in the hot chair, let me add to it. My question is to the Chair of the City Standard Committee, councillor Hutton. Councillor Hutton, Brisbane's outdoor lifestyle gives us the opportunity to make our city even better. Can you please update the chamber on the latest initiative helping to boost Brisbane's lifestyle?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, councillor Atwood, and I know you are a big supporter of our Street Art Wall Programme, and it is going from strength to strength. Madam Chair, Brisbane boasts the title of Australia's lifestyle capital, and our Street Art Wall Programme epitomises our commitment to fostering our city's vibrant culture while providing a platform for artists to refine their craft freely. Just last week, the Lord Mayor unveiled the latest addition to the programme at Paddington Skate Park. It has many locations where these budding artists can showcase their talents. But starting from mid-May, the Paddington Skate Park will also become the inaugural site to feature a purpose-built tri-wall. This innovative design consists of three two-point-four metre square panels, offering artists the opportunity to create larger-scale murals for the community to enjoy. The Paddington Skate Park holds a rich legacy within Brisbane's graffiti community, serving as a canvas where budding artists like Drapple and Softless initially cross paths and admired each other's work. From these humble beginnings, both artists have ascended to international acclaim, securing commissions across the globe. Their journey traces back to the vibrant walls of Paddington Skate Park, where their talents first nurtured and celebrated, marking a pivotal chapter in their artistic evolution. The artwork created by Turbo and his team for the grand opening of this Paddington site is truly exceptional. Despite the challenges posed by the rain in the days preceding the event, their dedication and meticulous planning shone through in every spray and detail. I must also highlight the remarkable El Shrin Dog piece, a standout addition to the unveiling. The opening also saw the honour bestowed upon Turbo by the Lord Mayor, presenting him with the inaugural Street Art Keys to the City, underscoring the significance of his contributions. Turbo's vision has been instrumental in establishing the very first legal street art wall, serving as a beacon for aspiring artists. His unwavering passion for this programme reflects his belief in the potential to cultivate and showcase world-class talent, thus shaping the future of urban artistry. As rightly pointed out by councillor Atwood, Brisbane's outdoor lifestyle presents us with the chance to enhance our city even further. And the street art programme is a fantastic initiative to elevate our outdoor spaces. Street art walls serve as a safe haven for both emerging and established street artists to unleash their creativity, while also fostering a culture of learning and collaboration within the broader community. The success of the first street art wall at Ekebin Park in Greenslopes launched in January two thousand and twenty-three. It is evident with budding and established artists heading to the site to push their styles, practise their techniques and develop in an artistically safe environment. It is great to see that this wisdom is being passed down to an eager next generation of Brisbane artists and muralists that are ready to be recognised on the global stage. In January of this year, we also introduced a new site at Tingalpa Spillway at the Stanton Road West Tingalpa, or more commonly known as the Tingalpa Spillway, within councillor Atwood's ward. Artist Fintin McGee, who has been painting at this site while growing up, has recently moved back to Brisbane from overseas. He said, "To many, this is the grey spill wall under the gateway. To us, the artists, this has the potential to launch an artist's career, not only locally, but onto the world stage." Fintin's earlier large-scale paintings often inhabited the isolated, abandoned and broken corners of the city, and today are found all over the world, including London, Vienna, Los Angeles, Moscow and Rome. I love that, Madam Chair, because this demonstrates how much impact these sites have in increasing the livability of our suburbs by seeing amazing mural and art in our community spaces, but also how we're fostering that next generation of artists. I want to quickly talk about two Brisbane local artists, Guido and Gus, who are incredibly talented and are doing amazing work in this space. Guido Van Helten is renowned for his photo-realistic murals and has pioneered the solo art trail in rural towns. These silo and water-towel murals are driving the economy in some of these rural communities. I've had a look at some of the artwork, Madam Chair, and it's truly exceptional. Guido has commissioned artwork not only in Australia, but in Italy, Jordan, Poland, the United States, India-
Thank you, councillor Hutton, your time is despite.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question's to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's six months since you committed to ensure that the Venna Road resurfacing project that you announced in the budget in June would be delivered this year. There's only two months of the year left. It's almost five years since Geoff Copeland was killed, and council's taken no action to address how dangerous and degraded Venna Road is. It is in appalling condition. Will you commit again today, as you did six months ago, to ensure that Venna Road is resurfaced as you promised in the budget in June last year?
Lord Mayor.
One of the things that I strenuously object to is any kind of linking of that tragic accident and the surface of the road.
Yes, right.
Because there was a thorough investigation done into that accident, and it was a driver that was drugged up at the time. You don't blame the road when that happens. It was a tragedy, and it should never have happened. But to try and make some political points out of this and suggest that resurfacing the road would change that is actually really disappointing. And so we'll continue delivering upgraded and resurfaced roads. I'll see if I can provide a more detailed timing of the Venna Road project, but obviously it was one that we included in the budget. But at this point in time, yeah, linking those two things together is completely inappropriate. And so we will continue resurfacing roads, part of our ongoing programme, and we did fund the Venna Road project in the budget. I will endeavour to get an update on the timing of that project, but certainly we're committed to resurfacing Venna Road. Exactly which month it will happen, I don't have at hand to me right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Adaman.
Councillor Me?
Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane two thousand and thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Deputy Mayor, recent data indicates tourist numbers to Brisbane reached a recent all-time high. Can you please update the chamber on these stats, including Brisbane's visitor economy?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, councillor Adaman. Because you are right, Brisbane tourism is booming, and the latest data showing that visitors from across Australia and the world spent over ten billion dollars in our city last year. This is great news for our local economy, with tourism supporting local jobs and businesses, including our hotels, tourism operators, cafes and restaurants right across the city. For the year ending two thousand and twenty-three, both domestic and international visitation to Brisbane hit new heights. Post-COVID domestic tourism was quick to recover and continues to soar, with seven-point-three million Australian travellers injecting a record-breaking seven-point-two million dollars into Brisbane in two thousand and twenty-three, up fourteen per cent year on year. Our popularity with southern states is also stronger than ever, with record numbers of visitors from Melbourne up nearly nine-point-five per cent year on year to six hundred and fifty-four thousand, as well as an increase in visitors from Sydney, up ten-point-three per cent to nine hundred and forty thousand. But of course, we're not surprised, because Brisbane cements its place as the destination for choice for holidaymakers. We are setting the pace, and we're excited to see this trend really gaining momentum. On the international front, we're seeing a promising signs of growth back to pre-COVID levels. International travellers flocking back to Brisbane have driven record-breaking visitor spend in the city. And when I say in the city, I mean right across Brisbane, not the class warfare we hear from the opposition of just in the CBD. Right across the city, we are seeing the data showing the spend from our two thousand and twenty-three international visitors at two-point-nine billion dollars, up nearly two per cent from two thousand and nineteen. While overall international numbers still have some way to fully recover, the average length of stay for visitors has also increased by three nights, now sitting at just over twenty nights, with a record number of nights for travellers visiting friends and family, up twenty-one per cent from two thousand and nineteen to nine-point-five million. And that has been a major focus we've had in BEAT, to keep those families and friends staying here in the city and spending in Brisbane. New Zealand, the UK and the USA had the largest numbers of international visitors to Brisbane, while the number of visitors from countries including Canada, India and Thailand also hit all-time highs. Fantastic news, as I said, for our economy, and also wonderful to see residents welcoming their loved ones back to Brisbane to spend time together. Not only do we see record spending, but international visitors are also enjoying longer stays in Brisbane, because of course there's more to see and do here than ever before. We are now renowned as Australia's lifestyle capital. World-renowned, in fact, as reported by Time Magazine, The New York Times and Travel Bible Frommers, as a must-visit destination. From riverside precincts like Howard Smith Wolves and South Bank to world-class dining, stunning natural surrounds and an abundance of free and affordable events right across our city. We have Australia's best restaurant, Agnes, the best hotel, The Callisle, not to mention international blockbuster sports events like FIFA Women's World Cup, Brisbane Cycling Festival wrapping up just last weekend, and the NRL Magic Round coming up in May. Another key driver to attracting our visitors to Brisbane has been what we call pleasure travel, so mixing business with leisure. So this is a no-small part to the competitive business events calendar we continue to drive through Brisbane's Economic Development Agency. Hundreds of thousands of delegates are set to hit Brisbane this year, travelling from across Australia and around the world, filling our hotels and restaurants while boosting our city's reputation as a global business events destination. Last year, business events in Brisbane delivered ninety million dollars in economic activity for the city, and this year it's looking at close to ninety-five million. Many of our conferences, which are scheduled, are from the health and science realm. No surprise when you learn that Brisbane has one of the largest hospital and healthcare clusters in the southern hemisphere, and is home now to more than a hundred health and biotech facilities. As our city continues to secure high-profile events, we'll continue to better our hotels, venues and lifestyle offerings to match. We're also supporting the return of these events and ensuring our international visitors continue to grow through new and expanded aviation routes to Brisbane from key markets so more visitors from around the world can enjoy the best of Brisbane. These events inject hundreds of millions of dollars into the economy, attracting visitors from across Australia and the world, making Brisbane an even better place to work, visit and invest.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chair for City Standards, councillor Hutton. This is a very simple and easy one, I'm sure you'll have these figures at your fingertips. How many footpath repair jobs are currently outstanding across Brisbane?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to councillor Cassidy for the question. Again, the opposition love to play politics with the everyday services of council. And it's interesting that you're bringing up what you would consider the footpaths that have not been repaired. At the moment, our teams are going through those processes and are reviewing the way that they are managing those programmes, so I will come back to you in time with those details. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hutton. Further questions? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community and Arts Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, supporting Brisbane's creative sector is a key part of our plan to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better. Can you please update the chamber on the Shriner Council's latest investment in the arts?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Parry for the question, because of course I'm always very happy to talk about the community and the arts of our beautiful city of Brisbane. And the Shriner Council has long supported the promotion and development of the arts and arts workers to ensure Brisbane remains a vibrant, creative and cultural world city. Through the Creative Brisbane/Creative Economy Strategy, we are committed to developing a creative and prosperous Brisbane where our city's artistic sector thrives and is driven by talented leaders, creative entrepreneurs and a skilled artistic workforce. This commitment involves investing in initiatives that support the continuing growth and professional development of this sector and showcases Brisbane's talented and diverse creative and cultural community. To foster this growth within the city, I'm happy to announce that earlier this month, we announced the successful recipients of both our Creative Sparks Grant Programme and our Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships. By way of brief background, the Creative Sparks Grant Programme is a Brisbane City Council initiative, delivered in partnership with Arts Queensland to support artists, art workers and producers who live and work in Brisbane to extend their creative practice in the development of new works. Council funding towards the initiative fosters creative entrepreneurial and commercial approaches and investment in new partnerships between the arts, community and business. I'm happy to announce that earlier this month, council awarded close to two hundred thousand dollars in funding to nineteen local artistic groups or individuals to deliver new creative projects across the city and suburbs, boosting the city's creative industry. Successful recipients this year include Paul Hodge, whose innovative new musical Blackbox will be premiered at QPAC in May, and Brisbane-born arts company Flipside Circus, who have also received funding to collaborate with The Good Room to deliver a blend of contemporary circus and visual theatre. We really are privileged as a city to have such a strong and burgeoning pool of talent, creating new artistic works across the city, and we look forward to seeing this new wave of Creative Sparks alumni as they bring more creative offerings to our suburbs. Moving on now to another one of our ongoing initiatives, the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships. The Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship supports Brisbane artists, art workers, cultural workers or creative producers who wish to develop and expand their careers in the arts and cultural- or creative producers who wish to develop and expand their careers in the arts and cultural sector. Since the programme began in 1996, over 120 creatives have received financial support from council to develop their skills, attend workshops, host residencies, participate in conferences, and undertake structured learning opportunities across the world. I'm happy to announce that just this week, council announced the successful recipients of this fellowship programme, who are set to take their careers to the next level and showcase their skills for the world to see. The initiatives funded under this year's funding include creative residencies in Denmark and the UK, and other professional development opportunities, such as writing and screenplay workshops in Brisbane and across the globe. Providing funding for initiatives like the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship ensures that we foster and develop the next generation of creative talent that our city is known for, making Brisbane's cultural scene even better. As you would all know, supporting, developing, and establishing creatives and arts workers reaps a tremendous amount of benefit for the city, including fostering the development of new creative arts and artworks for the benefit of visitors and residents of Brisbane, building our creative and cultural scene, creating employment opportunities for locals, and encouraging tourism to the city, and of course, building Brisbane's reputation as a global creative hub. The Creative Sparks Grant Programme and our Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships are just two examples of initiatives that build our city's reputation as a modern and creative world city. Our initiatives that I encourage those here today to investigate includes Brisbane City Council's Cube Effect, which is running at the moment and is giving 19 musical acts the opportunity to take part in an annual music development programme. These 19 acts have been undertaking a range of musical professional development opportunities since November 2023, and the programme will culminate in an awards night on the 19th of August. We are a vibrant and creative city, and supporting initiatives like these ensure that the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today.
Thank you, councillor. Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Civic Cabinet Chair for City Standards, councillor Hutton. You might be reviewing this process as well, and maybe I'll have to take this on notice, just like how footpaths are determined to be broken or not, apparently. But my question is, how many playgrounds and pieces of park equipment are currently broken and awaiting repair?
councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am feeling very popular over here. And I would like to say thank you councillor Cassidy for being so inquisitive about our footpaths, our playground equipment. It is fantastic. We are reviewing the process at the moment, and unfortunately, I don't have that data at hand, so I will be able to come back to him in due course.
Thank you, councillor. Further questions, councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development, Nighttime Economy, and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Deputy Mayor, investing in Brisbane remains a strong option for those looking to do business in our city. Can you please update the chamber on some of the latest deals happening in Brisbane ahead of the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor Adaman again, and Madam Chair, because it's not just our visitors that are flocking to Brisbane. We are alive with opportunity here in Brisbane, and we are also seeing people coming to Brisbane to invest, to work, and live here as well. And the more that people visit Brisbane, the more we know that people will know where Brisbane is, and that's when they'll come and invest here as well. People from all corners of the world are coming here now to live and work, and we are a city with unstoppable momentum. It's an upward trajectory for us, and I am very proud to say that the city of Brisbane has given us the very big responsibility, but humble responsibility, of being the administration that makes sure we continue in an upward trajectory as well. And it's all about creating that perfect environment for businesses to start, run, and grow. BETA drives investment demand for the city in both domestic and international markets. And as a city with a thriving economy, we have the potential for huge growth across the entire business ecosystem. We are currently experiencing a transformative era with a strong pipeline of infrastructure projects that are reshaping our city shape. From the construction of Queens Wolf Precinct, Brisbane Metro Bridges, Victoria Park, to significant advancements in our technology and research sectors, we are rapidly emerging as a prime destination for investors globally. As the closest major city to Asian markets, we are looking to secure our position as the economic powerhouse in the region. Bolstered by a global 24-hour airport that has the largest runway capacity in Australia, one of the fastest-growing multi-car cargo ports with unparalleled links domestically and internationally. Our close proximity gives us a clear advantage over cities like Sydney and Melbourne, which I like to say are so 50 years ago. And couple that with the incredible lifestyle of our thriving city, we are looking at a powerful array of investment drivers. BETA's investment attraction team provide a one-stop shop providing potential investors with industry insights and business data, as well as access to our business network, including critical introductions to local industry stakeholders, public and private businesses, and other levels of government. The team have been run off their feet, fielding inquiries from interested investors at rate of knots with no signs of slowing down. They are meeting and beating their targets with over 300 inquiries fielded for the financial year against the KPI of 104. February saw the biggest influx with a record of 73 inquiries, followed by 63 in March, bringing the total number of inquiries for this quarter alone just shy of 160. There is no shortage of interest in Brisbane, and the team are working around the clock to make sure we don't miss any of those opportunities. They're converting interest into early-stage leads, leads converting into investment wins. The teams are tracking well, looking to advance close to 60 early-stage leads. And that is no mean feat. As the type of projects we're looking at here are mega, multimillion-dollar investments, often in the hundreds of millions of dollars. BETA officially landed their second investment win for the financial year in March with an estimated economic impact of $150.24 million, creating 223 new jobs and supporting 341 local jobs. And that was the Martin Brower Facility Project at Carrawatha, a new state-of-the-art, temperature-controlled distribution facility that will support international supply chains. The ripple effect of these investments extends far beyond direct job creation and the immediate economic boost. A flourishing investment landscape means local businesses also thrive, from the retail, the hospitality, the services, all benefiting from increased consumer spending and enhanced economic activity. We are proud to be playing such a crucial role in this journey, and we are working hard to continue our city's potential, support our local businesses, and work towards a thriving future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And that now ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 22nd of April 2024.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Yes, I move that the motion currently lying on the table, that this council fly the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the storyboard, come off the table for debate.
Second it.
Councillors, you have to move that there be a suspension of standing rules and... Take off the table, sorry. My apologies. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the motion from the 6th of September 2022 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it. The motion is lost. Sorry, we'll now move to ENC. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 22nd of April 2024, be adopted.
It has...
Second it.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 22nd of April 2024, be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor?
There is, Madam Chair. I can report on the matter that councillor Collier just raised. Right now, we are going through a process of consultation with our First Nations stakeholders on this matter, and that process has not yet been finalised. And so, once we do get the feedback and that consultation is finalised, we will happily report back to the chamber and have that debate. But that has not yet been finalised. So I think it would be premature, unless of course, you were just trying to play politics with this issue, to have this debate prior to the consultation with our traditional owners being finalised. So, moving forward. Moving forward. I just wanted to talk about Labour's approach in question time, and their approach generally since losing the election in the worst way that they've lost in the history of the Labour team. And effectively seeding all ground and all credibility to a radical left-wing party that has absolutely abhorrent views that are totally out of touch with the wider community. You'd think after getting a message like that from the public that they would change their approach. But they've literally come in and they've started a new term exactly the same way they finished the last term. They have learnt nothing. They've doubled down on a strategy which is quite clearly failing, and has only failed to boost the Greens' support, only succeeded in boosting the Greens' support, but has completely failed in this administration losing any support whatsoever. And so they've doubled down on it. And it's almost as though they think, oh, look, people haven't heard our message. We need to keep repeating it. So all of the money they spent on radio ads and advertising, they just think, oh, maybe if a few more people hear that message, they might fall for it. But what we see is failure to accept that the problem here is that, first of all, they can't offer any alternative plans, and they certainly can't offer a costed alternative. But they don't get the fundamental idea or concept that when people pay their rates, they actually want that money managed responsibly. And they want their council not just to keep spending despite the fact that costs are going up and drive up rates and rents, but instead, people might actually want their council to manage their money responsibly. And they haven't got that message at all. But the other thing is, they always gild the lily. They always overstretch, they overreach. And so, in their major advertising campaign during the election, we all remember the ads where it started off with a very somber video of me. It was a black and white one. Everything was black and white, and I was looking very somber. Why? Because they lifted that video from the message of condolence that I was giving for Queen Elizabeth's passing. So they didn't consider that it was a little bit off to use a video of me giving a message of condolence for the Queen's death. They were quite happy to use that in their negative advertising campaign. But that was only just the minor problem with that. Secondly, they suggested that I had stopped an SES depot from going ahead, and that I had stopped flood recovery works, when in fact, both of those things were stopped by the Labour state government. The SES depot had funding rejected from the Labour state government. You know this, Madam Chair. They missed out that part in their advertising campaign. So the Labour state government stopped the SES depot from going ahead by rejecting the funding. And then, the flood recovery works that were apparently stopped were actually rejected by the Queensland Government's Reconstruction Authority. Why? Because they believed that they were not flood recovery works. Oh, they don't meet any criteria. They're not actually meeting our criteria for flood recovery works. They didn't mention that part in their advertising campaign. But what they did do is they then ended it off by saying, how does the Lord Mayor have hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on self-promotion? Not thousands of dollars, not even millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on self-promotion. So, as I said, they always, they can't help themselves. They always go too far. They always gild the lily, they always stretch the truth, and people could see straight through it. Because the amount of people that came up to me during the election saying, this is about hundreds of millions of dollars, that just really doesn't sound credible. And I'm like, that's because it's not. People didn't believe it. They knew it was gilding the lily. And so, to come in here today and to pursue the same issues and to double down without learning anything from the election is quite extraordinary. I probably shouldn't say anything. I should probably just let them keep doing it, because it's been such a failure to this point that maybe I should let them do it. But look, it's growing tired. We're growing tired of this approach. The reality is, we have had to reduce our spending in order to keep rates and rents down. It's as simple as that. We've been really up clear about that, and it hasn't been a secret. It's not some kind of caught-out moment here. We were proactive about telling people. And in fact, people have also said to me, oh, that was a great election strategy to, you know, announce that you had to reduce spending. I'm like, what do you mean that was a great election strategy? We had to reduce spending because the cost of everything was going up. It wasn't an election strategy, it was actually responsible financial management. That's why we did it, and that's why we'll continue to keep the budget balanced. And that sometimes involves cutting back on spending in certain areas to relieve the pressure on rates and rents. And so, you know, it's no secret. And they're like, oh, you know, if any more people would know. Well, everyone heard. Everyone heard the message, they rejected it. And so, going forward, we will continue a responsibly, a responsible financial approach when it comes to the management of the city's finances. And that means we won't spend more than we can afford to spend. Because in the end, we know how that ends. We know that in the end, ratepayers pay more if you take the Labour approach or the Green approach. And that also means renters pay more as well, because rates are passed on to renters. And so, this idea that you can somehow increase rents without there being any impact on, increase rates without there being any impact on renters is, you know, obviously a bit far-fetched. And so by keeping rates down, we're also not adding to the pressure on rents. But we're also keen to continue to increase supply of housing, and whether it's affordable housing, whether it's just general housing that's being built, we have been very proactive in making sure that we accommodate supply wherever possible. But I heard councillor Collier interjecting. When councillor Allen called Labour and the Greens out for opposing development, they're like, you guys are in charge. And the clear implication there was, well, don't worry about us, we don't have any power. We, you know, what we do is not significant. Yet, they promised people that they will fight for the residents and stand up for the residents. And the only thing I've seen them fighting is actually fighting new housing. That's consistently what they've done the entire time I've been Lord Mayor. They've fought against new housing being built. And so, to say, oh, don't worry about us, oh, you know, it's not us. People want to know what you stand for. They know that we stand for increasing housing supply, and that we stand for reducing the cost of building homes in Brisbane. But they also know that you stand against housing. And in fact, a big part of the vote of the Greens is an assumption that the Greens will stop housing being built. We know, we know it to be true. We know that people are like, oh, yeah, I'll vote Greens so that nothing happens in my area. These lovely leafy areas will stay exactly the same, because the Greens will stop it. And so, somehow, the Greens can promise to build a million new homes. But they certainly won't be in green areas. They certainly won't be in green areas. And that's the ultimate nimbyism.
Your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Seconded. It has been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say, in favour say aye. Those no. The ayes have it.
And then we also saw last week questions around Kirilpa. How many new homes have been built in Kirilpa? As though... As though, as though the Greens were hungry for new homes to be built in Kirilpa. We know they don't want any new homes to be built in Kirilpa. We know they've opposed new homes being built in Kirilpa because they want it in other parts of Brisbane, not in green areas. And it's the same with Labour. They want homes in other people's areas, not in their own. And so, one thing that's been really consistent is, people know what Labour and the Greens are fighting against, but they don't know what they're fighting for. And, once again, they double down on being against things rather than being for things. And so, it's a real disappointing approach, but as I said, I probably should, I probably shouldn't have said anything. They might actually change their approach and they might actually get somewhere, but I doubt it. So, Madam Chair, in front of us, we have two items, but before I go into those, I just wanted to, as I normally do, talk about the lighting up of assets to support our community in various causes. Last night, City Hall was lit up in blue to support World Wish Day. This is a global campaign that supports the granting of wishes to children who are suffering critical illnesses. Whether it's trips to theme parks, ride in a supercar or a new puppy, the campaign aims to bring these wishes to life for sick kids. Tonight, all our assets will be lit up in green for the eve of Lyme Disease Awareness Day. The Lyme Disease Association of Australia runs their campaign throughout May to raise awareness for and support for patients of Lyme and other tick-borne diseases. On Wednesday and Thursday night, all our assets will be lit up in purple to mark the beginning of Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month. The month will work to raise awareness of domestic and family violence, coercive control, and mobilise corporate and community action to end this behaviour in Queensland. On Friday night, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, City Hall and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in blue and purple to support International Huntington's Month. Huntington's is a neurodegenerative disorder that's both fatal and incurable and affects about 10 out of every 100,000 Australians. Saturday is International Firefighter Day and our assets will be lit up in red to mark the occasion. Celebrated globally, this day recognises the bravery and sacrifice our firefighters make both locally and across the world every single day. On Sunday night, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in the rainbow colours for Big Gay Day and is back for its 24th year. And once again, we're supporting it. It's a festival of celebration of Brisbane's LGBTQ community with both local and international talent on display. And councillor Howard is very much looking forward to it, as she does every year. Item A, in front of us, the Contracts and Tendering Report for March. Five out of five contracts were awarded to local suppliers. The caretaker period obviously related to March, so there were a limited number of contracts that month for obvious reasons. And only essential contracts that had to be dealt with in that period were dealt with. Obviously, we weren't involved in that process. 199 contracts have been awarded to local suppliers so far this financial year, 87.7% of contracts with local suppliers, which means a total spend of $1.25 billion has gone to local suppliers. Contracts included include roof repairs at the Wintermanly Seagulls, remediation work at the Kangaroo Point Cliffs, car park reconstruction work at the Sandgate Seahawks AFL Club, repair at the Willston Scouts Building, restoration works of the open drain on Bennett Road and the Gap. Also, item B is the supply of premixed concrete. Now councillor Cassidy and others have, you know, once again tried to double down and referred to a line in the document which tries to predict future demand for this kind of product. Well, look, the reality is that demand is set each year in the budget. We are in the process of working on the budget. And this year, obviously, we've been very upfront about our need to reduce spending in certain areas. But what happens from here on, obviously, will be a matter for those budget deliberations. And so, an officer's view on what future demand might be, might be good from an academic point of view, but it won't match reality. The reality, obviously, will be set as we go through the budget preparation process each year. But, as councillor Hutton correctly pointed out, we've been spending and investing far more in footpath construction and maintenance than Labour ever did in administration. And they love to say, oh, it was 20 years ago, doesn't count. Well, it does count because that's the only thing we have to measure. Actually, I've misled the chamber. It's not the only thing we have to measure them by. They have this thing called a suburban enhancement fund, where they can, they can fund footpaths. And they fund bugger all. They literally have the choice to spend this allocation each year on playgrounds or parks or other improvements, or footpaths. And what they do is they choose to spend it on other things and then criticise the administration about footpaths. And so, they're the two things we have to measure Labour's credibility on and by both of those measures, it's not particularly crash hot. We'll continue to invest in footpaths, we'll continue to invest in footpath repairs, but also it's important to remember what the process here is. And councillor Hutton knows this very well. When we get a community report or a councillor sees a footpath which might be unsafe, and when I say unsafe, I mean, for example, a trip hazard, then a council will come out and inspect that as soon as possible and take initial works to make it safe. Now, those initial works to make it safe may include grinding down raised sections of footpath, it may include a temporary repair to make the footpath smoother and not a trip hazard. But effectively, that initial response is all about making sure that people do not trip. And so, that is done very quickly and very efficiently and there should be no impact on that particular service. And so, this is something we have a high expectation on, this is a safety issue, it's dealt with quickly, it's dealt with efficiently, and we continue to support that. But, what we're referring to is areas that might be old or have some cracks in them that could use a refresh. These are not urgent, top priority jobs that will cause someone to injure themselves. And often, it is superficial cracking. Now, look, I know, my own driveway at home has cracks in it. They had cracks when I bought the house. And have I rushed out to replace the driveway? No. Why? Because it's actually not necessary. The cracks don't impact on a trip hazard, they don't create a trip hazard, they don't impact on my ability to use the concrete area, they are superficial cracks. And so, you know, Labour will carry on about a cracked section of footpath not getting repaired immediately. We base our criteria on public safety and they're the things that we give the top priority to. Superficial cracks or damage don't make the top priority list, they are dealt with over time, definitely, but it's public safety that gets the first response. And so, you'll see Labour always links the two things together, they'll say, oh, there's a cracked footpath, it's unsafe. Not true. Cracked footpaths can be perfectly safe and in fact, the damage in many cases is superficial. But the other thing is, and this is something that is obviously a concern for me, is the damage caused to our footpaths by others. And often, it is a concrete truck accessing a property, a house being built or a property being built. The truck, and ironically, it is a concrete truck that often does this damage, drives over a council footpath, cracks it, and then the builders don't take appropriate action. And so, this is a process that we're keen to follow up on because a significant percentage of the damaged footpaths are actually done by people driving over the footpaths in heavy trucks and cracking them. Obviously, other damage is done by trees and that's natural, that's something we accept in a beautiful city that has lots of tree cover. But this is something that we continue to work on, but public safety will always be our top priority. It is appropriately funded when it comes to dealing with those safety issues and we have the highest expectations of public safety. We expect them to be dealt with immediately.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just want to check, we're all right to use the term bugger all in debate?
Councillor Cassidy, please continue with your...
Okay, that's fine, we can do that. So, the Lord Mayor, the Lord Mayor, in his contribution today on clause A and B here, Contracts and Tendering, of which I think there's five projects? Five projects in Contracts and Tendering and the store's board submission for the supply of delivery, supply and delivery of premixed concrete. The Lord Mayor went from ranting and raving to rambling, even got on to the point, so in his contribution about the supply and delivery of premixed concrete for basic maintenance on council assets, he talked about cracked concrete at his house when he was buying it, God knows when, whenever that was. That came after about 12 minutes of ranting and raving about Labour councillors asking very legitimate questions, Chair.
One moment, Councillor Cassidy, point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Can I ask you a ruling on councillor Cassidy, who's not able to go around the world on the committee reports, but speak to the reports?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, can you get to the report?
Thanks very much, Chair. I will talk about concrete for footpaths. I won't talk about the Lord Mayor's cracking concrete at his house anymore, I don't need to, he canvassed that enough in his contribution about this significant contracting plan, talking about the damage at his own home, I still can't quite believe that, it's quite strange, actually. But the item B before us today is for the supply of concrete, supply and delivery of concrete for, and I quote from the report councillor Adams, for your benefit, the construction of curb and channel footpaths and drainage projects. Now, we asked questions, lots of questions about broken and damaged footpaths, about the data on those broken and damaged footpaths, the staff, council employees to manage broken footpaths as well as broken park equipment as well. And the Lord Mayor seems to think those questions are illegitimate somehow, that they're not the kind of questions that councillors should be asking of civic cabinet chairs. Particularly in the context of us getting this report before us today, which is asking us as councillors to endorse a significant contracting plan, which the Lord Mayor tried to distance himself from, tried to say, he tried to say that the council officers have stitched him up here. That's what he tried to say in the line here where it says that they expect, that they expect demand to reduce by up to 20% over the next two years, so the supply of concrete for very basic things, including footpaths in the suburbs of Brisbane, curbing and channeling work, and drainage projects. Now, this is a document that the Lord Mayor is presenting and spoken on, the E and C report before us today, that he and his councillors, his civic cabinet chairs, sat around a table last Monday and discussed and endorsed. So, it's a bit rich for him to come in here today, Chair, and say, apparently it's nothing to do with him. These lot, it is not a lie.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. We can always hear you speaking out loud to your people too, so it is difficult and that's why I often ask councillors to take their conversations outside.
I thought I heard something that I clearly didn't, so I apologise.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Cassidy.
So, the item before us today confirms, confirms what I think we all know in here and I know you know, Chair, I know the Lord Mayor knows this, and every LNP councillor knows, that the budget cuts the Lord Mayor announced last year are going to stay with us for years to come. So, we're not talking about, the Lord Mayor tried to cover this by saying, his budget cuts in this current financial year mean there will be less concrete needed for projects because he's cutting back on maintenance, basic services and projects in the suburbs of Brisbane. But we're not talking about this current financial year. What this item before us today is for is the two years beyond 2025. So, this contract comes into place in February 2025 and what council officers have identified based on the direction that they're getting from this Lord Mayor and his civic cabinet chairs and the funding that they are going to allocate in future budgets, in the forward estimates that are included in the upcoming council budgets and future council budgets, that less money is going to be spent on footpath repairs, drainage projects and curbing and channeling. It's all before us in black and white today. And it's very rich for the Lord Mayor to come in here and say, it's always somebody else's fault, of course. He blames everybody for everything and today, he's blamed Labour councillors for the lack of housing supply and for the lack of footpath maintenance and new footpaths in the suburbs of Brisbane. The Lord Mayor said, and I quote, that Labour councillors do bugger all footpaths when it comes to their SEF projects. Well, my list includes Bartholomew Street, Zilmia, Hinchcliffe Street, Zilmia, Kilpatrick Street, Zilmia, access path to Sandgate Aquatic Centre, Sheena Street, Gbung, High Street, Gbung and Queenstown Avenue this year. Doesn't sound like bugger all to me, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair. And I know councillor Griffiths is out there just about every day of the week, councillor Collier, I know. I'm not sure about in the Calvingvale Ward one because that was obviously all allocated by the previous councillor, Angela Owen. Understand most of that SEF, 100% of that SEF went on a car park, on a car park, none went to footpaths. So, I'm absolutely sure councillor Kim will be able to rectify that as the new councillor. But what we have before us today is evidence in black and white that there's going to be a 20% reduction in funding for curbing and channeling footpaths and drainage projects. And why do we know that, Chair? Because, well, one, it says there's going to be a 20% reduction in the amount of concrete ordered, and two, it says here that 99% of the spending for this contract is being generated from internal council construction activities. So, we're not talking about major projects, we're not talking about trimming back on the Metro, trimming back on Mogal Road, trimming back on the Indrapilly Roundabout, we're not talking about trimming back on the Greenbridge Programme here. What the Lord Mayor is doing when he says cutting back here and there is cutting back on curbing and channeling work, on footpaths and footpath repairs, and he's cutting back on drainage projects. Now, the number one thing that people say to me when I talk to them about what their priorities are for the upcoming council budget, for the last two years particularly, but even before the February 2022 flood disaster, has been more funding needs to be put into drainage projects. The, I did a drainage survey of my community following that disaster and of the 500 or 600 responses I got for that, the vast majority of those were about basic drainage upgrades needing to occur in their suburbs. Whether that is upgrading curbing and channeling to take more water to existing gully traps, whether that's investing in new drainage, additions to drainage systems, upgrading drainage systems, bigger pipes, all that sort of thing. The really basic stuff a council should do with ratepayers' money. Lord Mayor talked about his administration taking money in rates. And I think this year, it's over $1.6 billion coming into council in rates. And he says, this is his equation, that people want it managed well, sure. What they want council to do with those rates dollars is invest them in their communities on things like drainage upgrades, on things like new and improved footpaths to make our communities more accessible and to upgrade curbing and channeling in our road network as well. So, for the Lord Mayor to come in here and say, we have no right to ask questions about basic maintenance and these cuts that he's bringing for the next two and a half years in terms of basic maintenance is okay, it's not okay. And every single one of those civic cabinet chairs that sat around and discussed this last week and every single one of the LNP councillors that are going to vote in favour of this 20% reduction to concrete today are doing their communities a disservice. We saw last year, so this is all coming on top of the cuts that happened last year as well, the 25% reduction in road crews. So, I guess we should have seen this coming. If they're going to reduce road resurfacing by 25%, of course you reduce curbing and channeling by 20% and then you reduce footpaths by 20% and then you reduce drainage projects by 20%. This is clearly just in the LMP's DNA now to cut basic services. Sure, the Lord Mayor said he needed a cutback because of his decisions, but we knew then last year, and it's being confirmed now, that his number one target is basic maintenance and services that council should be delivering in the suburbs of Brisbane. So, we won't... So, we won't be supporting this contract today, given that it's very clear this is going to lead to cuts to basic maintenance in the suburbs of Brisbane. So, can I ask that item B be taken seriously, Adam, for voting, Chair?
Any further debate? Councillor Givney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to address item A for the contracts and tendering specifically regarding to the roof repairs at the Winham Manly Seagulls Juniors. This roof replacement holds significant importance for the esteemed club, who is the biggest rugby league club in Brisbane City Council, boasting a membership of exceeding 900, inclusive of approximately 100 women, including five female teams. The original clubhouse was actually built in 1952 at an initial cost of $2,000 and has undergone significant expansions in 1979 and 1986. The impending roof replacement planned to commence next month and conclude in September strategically aligns with Brisbane's drier weather conditions. Council officers are currently collaborating with the Winham Manly Seagulls to facilitate these forthcoming works, valued at approximately $340,000, and these aim at ensuring that their loved community facility at 57 Stradbroke Avenue in Winham, affectionately known as Kitchener Park, is safer for all. Recently, the president of the Winham Manly Seagulls Juniors, Avette, alongside her dedicated committee of Dan, Kylie, Julie, Jai, and Vicky orchestrated an exciting fundraising event, a pig racing evening, to both engage and gather support for the club. Attending this event with my family, I had the pleasure of assisting Kylie selling raffle tickets for the meat tray, and, sorry, and the manner in which this club fosters community support among the families is truly commendable. The event raised over $12,000, which is directed to subsidising players' costs so that more players can play this community sport. The clubhouse is also home to the Winham Darts Club, and the facilities are shared with the Winham Manly Touch and many other school competitions. The Winham Manly Seagulls Junior Rugby Club serves as a feeder club for the BMD Winham Manly Seagulls, which was once graced by the legendary Wally Lewis. These clubs are the cornerstones to connecting our community, and their enduring legacy has continued to run deep within the Winham Manly community for generations. Weekends on the bayside witness locals uniting at Cugarri Oval, steadfast for their support of the Winham Manly Seagulls. The success of the mighty club is recognised not only by the hardworking and talented players, but the unwavering dedication of fans, support personnel, and numerous volunteers who ensure both junior and senior clubs are adopting sustainable and successful practices. Local business leaders, including Barton's, BMD, Lipkey Motors, and the Winham Manly Leagues Club have been staunch advocates for the clubs. Clubs like the Winham Manly Seagulls play a vital role in providing our youth with meaningful avenues for engagement, fostering relationships with peers, mentors, and coaches. The club expresses gratitude to the Brisbane City Council for its support of this project, enabling them to ensure that their clubhouse remains a safe place for their whole community, and they can continue to provide opportunities for youth participation in rugby league. Thank you.
Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item A and item B, and just am very interested in item three of the contracts and tendering, the Hawkes Sporting Club car park construction at Tigam. I'm just wondering if that's in councillor Cassidy's ward? And that's excellent, because I'm sure he'll nod at me if I get this right. I'm just interested on whether this is being funded through council's capital budget, or whether he was asked to do this through his SEF. So, I appreciate that right around Brisbane there are a number of sporting clubs that desperately need repairs and upgrades, and many of these are, you know, car parks because they are just in terrible condition. It is fascinating to me today that on the report that we have before us, some $296,265 is being invested into the Hawkes Sporting Club car park construction at Tigam. Now, I'm sure it's well deserved, I don't question the fact that it needs to be done. What is fascinating is the way in which council treats other car parks that are being neglected in other parts of the city, and I'll certainly have a lot more to say about that as this meeting progresses. But what is interesting to me is that council does fund car park upgrades through its capital budget, they don't make councillors in other wards do it out of their trust funds. And it's not been my experience that councillors are required to do basic maintenance like filling potholes, remarking lines, trimming trees back so car parks can be accessed, replacing wooden bollards, basic maintenance requests. It's not been my experience that that's something that councillors are required to do through their SEF funds. And I'm not sure of the scope of the works here, hopefully it's an extension, that's also something that councillors don't normally do. Well, apparently councillor Owen, who's no longer with us, that gives a pretty good indication of priorities, I guess. But I'm very interested in what's happening at this location. I note that council is investing into Capital Works Budget into car parks on the northern side of Brisbane, and I'm just very curious about why they're refusing to do so in Tennyson Ward on the southern side of Brisbane, and I'll have more to say about this as the meeting progresses. I too want to just speak on item B. It is very obvious that the budget cuts the Lord Mayor has wreaked over this city are coming home to roost, and it is astonishing that the Lord Mayor thinks that less concrete for essential maintenance works like car park repairs, or footpaths, or drainage, less concrete will be required over the next two years. So, that is an extraordinary situation, I think, and without question, it reflects the poor forward planning, the poor scoping, and the poor leadership of this LNP administration. I mean, the Lord Mayor has stood up today, and I agree with councillor Cassidy, gone off on a complete tangent, I mean, his own driveway is irrelevant to what we're discussing about the expenditure of public funding, although he does get $100,000 in public funding he doesn't account for. But this is a debate about how public funds are spent in the city, and this council has to be accountable for how that funding is allocated. It's clear that projects are being cut back all over the city, all over the city. It takes over a year, somewhere between a year and 18 months to get a footpath properly repaired in Brisbane. Councillor Hutton, I think, is living in some kind of fantasy land if she thinks that it's being done quickly. Yes, they might go out and put a bit of asphalt over a bad join, maybe they'll do that, but not always, maybe. But what then happens is that'll sit there for a year or 18 months, and the footpath is not fixed. Now, when I started, these things were fixed within a matter of weeks, and even I'd go back as far as last term saying that council were slow, but, you know, within a year you would definitely have a footpath that would have been fixed. It is just, it's just a turkey shoot at the moment as to whether or not you will get your footpath fixed. And the idea that this council thinks that we need less concrete for the next two years to deliver on the most important and basic services that this city needs is astonishing. It shows that the Lord Mayor's financial mismanagement of this council's budget and the LNP councillors' blind support of this budget continues to cause hardship for people in the suburbs who can't get basic repairs undertaken. They're not getting their drains fixed. We've got a park still closed two and a half years after the floods in Sherwood, still closed, no work done to fix it. I'm presuming some concrete will be needed because there was a major stormwater detention basin in there. Will there even be enough concrete over the next two years to get this done? I don't know. It is just not good enough that the Lord Mayor thinks that less money is needed for concrete. So, because we don't sadly need less concrete, we actually need more, there's more hard work that does need doing. I think what it reflects which the deputy, sorry, which the opposition leader raised is that there are more budget cuts to come. If the Lord Mayor knows now he doesn't need as much, 20% less concrete, 20% of fifth less concrete, that means that there are less projects that will be delivered. So, this is a damning indictment of this LNP administration's failure to deliver on basic services for the Brisbane community, and it's not good enough.
Further speakers, councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A, specifically the structural repairs being undertaken at Wilston Scout Hut in Grange. Built before the Second World War, the Wilston Scout Hut has been a fixture in the Grange cultural precinct for almost a century. Conveniently located across the road from Grange Bowls Club, Lanham Park, and a stone's throw from the Grange Library, countless local scouts have walked through the doors of this hut, eager to embark on camping trips, learn valuable skills like first aid and navigation, and contribute to their community through service projects. I'm told one such project was making bandages during World War II to help the war effort. Now home to around 60 Cubs, Scouts, and Venturers, the hut provides a space for our kids to continue their pursuit of leadership, resilience, and making the world a better place. However, over time, the building that was in fact built by Scouts in the first place many years ago has deteriorated somewhat and requires some structural works to be undertaken. Council has worked closely with Scouts Queensland in developing the scope to enhance this facility. The $280,000 project includes re-stumping works, some floor replacement, stairs, and a ramp replacement, and new concrete sleeper retaining wall. We have also ensured that the group can be accommodated at other facilities where possible while the works are carried out. These improvements will begin in mid-May and are set to be completed sometime in early August of this year. In speaking with Tracy, the scout group coordinator, I also know that Wilston Scouts intends to undertake some further upgrades at this local facility once our works have been completed. This includes a new dishwasher, a fresh lick of paint, and potentially improved flooring in the kitchen. I know there's a few working bees coming up too, so look out. Of course, the priority remains fundraising for the next January in 2025, where five lucky Wilston Scouts are heading to the great Queensland town of Merribah, which will be very exciting for them. In closing, I will mention that we have numerous dens, huts, and halls just like this one across the suburbs in Marchant Ward. You may never even notice them when you're driving past, and you probably won't until you perhaps go to vote, or take your baby to its first playgroup, or maybe when your little one becomes a Joey, or maybe it's even later, when you become a member of the Wilston Windbags and perform your regular cardio sessions within the hall's walls. Whatever it may be, these facilities are important hubs for our community, and I'm proud to support the Wilston Scout Hall as local councillor so that it continues to serve us well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to enter the debate on item A. I'm just a little confused, Madam Chair, because I would have thought that the leader of the opposition would have spoken about one of the most amazing projects in his ward, but of course it was left to the councillor for Tennyson to do that, so I just wanted to set the record straight. And I wanted to provide a brief summary of the works that are set to take place at the Hawkes Sporting Club at 120 Lemke Road, Tigam. The current scope of works for this car park reconstruction includes demolition of the current car park asphalt, replacement with new asphalt in the same footprint, and the installation of 80 car parks with the inclusion of a person with disability car park. We know that this facility was quite heavily impacted by the 2022 floods, and we hope that these works will deliver a new and improved car park for the benefit of club members and supporters. It certainly was something that council worked very closely with the club immediately after those 2022 floods to make sure that we reinstated the car park for community use. And the works before us today are much more substantive, providing the club with an upgraded car park which is set to be used for decades to come. So, Madam Chair, this project is funded by the Australian Government Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme, Phase Four. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the significant contract plan for supply and delivery of pre-mixed concrete. This SCP commits council to continuing to provide this vital material to build the infrastructure our city needs. This item seeks approval for a public tender to establish a panel of suppliers once the current arrangement expires in February 2025. In 2003 alone, city standards utilise an impressive 17,000 cubic metres of pre-mixed concrete across various projects throughout the city. These projects include drainage rehabilitation works in McIntyre Street Hendra, construction of new footpaths in front of Winham State High School, replacement of the Bar Street pedestrian bridge in Taragindi, restoration works in the Cobalt Street Open Drain in Compera, and much, much more. As we continue to enhance our city's lifestyle and develop infrastructure to keep Brisbane moving, re-establishing this panel of suppliers is crucial to ensuring the timely and efficient supply and delivery of pre-mixed concrete. The tender for this panel will be released in mid-June this year. As the chamber may know, pre-mixed concrete is a highly perishable material and has a narrow transport radius of 40 to 50 kilometres. So, I'm pleased to note that this tender presents an opportunity to explore innovation in concrete delivery solutions. We expect the technology, such as truck tracking apps, alternative mix trials, and electronic delivery of dockets, will be put forward in council's consideration. Chair, with every project undertaken from road repairs to drainage enhancements, we are not just laying concrete, we are laying the groundwork for a better Brisbane and a more efficient city. I commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Labor councillors were interested to know what my driveway had to do with footpaths, and it was quite clear that it was all about the difference between a safety issue and a superficial crack in a footpath. And just as a resident wouldn't rush out to fix a superficial crack in their driveway or at home, the reality is we focus our priority on the jobs that are a safety issue, and that's always been our priority, it continues to be our priority. And I think that's the priority that people would expect us to have as well, and so we will continue to make sure that we direct the resources of council to identifying and repairing and fixing those safety issues so that the community can move around safely on footpaths and on bikeways, and we'll continue to invest, not only to claim that more investment is required, but to actually put our money where our mouth is as well and fund these things in the budget. We know that Labor councillors in the past have been caught out when it comes to their own record on footpaths. We know that they've claimed for years and years, they've made claims for years and years about the need for more money on footpaths, and we've called them out repeatedly. So, if you look back to 21, the 21-22 financial year, Labor councillor Cook at the time built zero footpaths from her fund that was available to her. Councillor Strunk built zero footpaths from the fund that was available to him. Councillor Cumming at the time built one footpath. Councillor Cassidy built two footpaths. And councillor Griffiths, who's the only person who seems to actually on that side of the chamber be building footpaths, built six. So, good on you councillor Griffiths, you're using, oh, he's not here, using the funding that's provided for an issue that he considers to be important. The following year, 22-23, councillor Cook slash councillor Collier built zero footpaths in that year. Councillor Strunk built one. Councillor Cumming slash councillor Whitme, obviously there was a changeover, built zero. Councillor Cassidy built two. Councillor Griffiths built five. So, as I said, he's obviously considers that to be a priority and invests in it. Councillor Cassidy listed off a whole range of streets that he'd apparently built footpaths in. I assume that's his entire career in council that he was referring to there, because it certainly wasn't one year worth of projects. So, they've been caught out in the past. They've been, oh, so he's suddenly found a newfound interest in footpaths in one year. That's good, that's good. But I thought there was less funding for footpaths available, councillor Cassidy. He's building more than ever! Well, no, no, I don't have this year's, but I'm sure, I'm sure that in the lead-up to the election, you decided to put your money where your mouth is, and good for you, good for you. When I'm addressing those, I just... When I'm addressing those, I just want to, if you will allow me, just raise the issue that was raised by councillor Johnston. I have a response, if you're interested in hearing that, councillor Johnston, on Venna Road. And so the resurfacing of Venna Road is dependent on potentially the need to relocate underground utilities. And so on the 20th of May, so later on in the month of May, we'll be doing a road closure and detailed surveys of the underground utilities to determine what work will be required prior to the resurfacing. Under the, under the road, we know that there's not only water pipes under the road, but also a 33-kilowatt electricity cable as well. And so we're, we're doing the appropriate work in advance to determine what utility relocations will be required. And so obviously, resurfacing can't happen until the utilities are identified and relocated if necessary, and we're working on that now. And so our commitment is to resurface Venna Road. The funding is in place to resurface Venna Road, and at this point in time, the only thing standing in the way is just that work that needs to be done on utilities. So hopefully we'll get a good response and the work can proceed sooner rather than later. But obviously, one of the things when you start looking at underground utilities, and councillor Wynes knows this, you could discover things that you may not have been aware of, and they can become really expensive. We know that, I think it was like $14 million with Telstra that we had to spend. Might even be more than that with the Mogal Road project, just with one utility provider that didn't include Enerjex, that didn't include water utilities. And so these things can be quite expensive and time consuming. And if it's not your utility to move, then you are completely at the behest of another agency who will often just take their time to move it. So if the cable, electricity cable needs to be moved by, say, Enerjex or one of the providers, they will sometimes just take their time to do that, and there's not really a thing that we can do about that, unfortunately. So the funding remains in place, the commitment to resurface Venna Road remains in place, but we are reliant on utilities to determine the exact timing of that project. And if I have any further news, obviously happy to provide that news. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So we will now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
The division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillors ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Close the doors. Clerk, please read the results.
And Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and seven against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Deputy Mayor. Councillor Adams, Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday 23rd of April 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday 23rd of April 2024 be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just. I think that was on, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and just briefly, because I have spoken about it already in question time, we did do the economic update last week with the manager of economic development, and it is, again, as I mentioned, a very upward trajectory and very exciting for how we're going in Brisbane. I've talked about tourism, I've talked about the investment, but also locally, we're seeing in the number of businesses actively trading within Brisbane growing as well. So it's increased by 1.9% to 138,801 when compared to June 2022. And it's great, because what we're also seeing is 97% of those businesses were considered small businesses with less than twenty employees, and 3% were considered medium to large with more than twenty employees. So we're really seeing those homegrown, starting and growing, or starting and running, and then we're hoping to see them grow and step into those larger businesses over the coming decades. Interesting to see the type of businesses that are really in our local traders gaining traction in Brisbane, professional, scientific and technical services, rental hiring and real estate services, construction, of course, healthcare and social assistance, transport, postal and warehouse. So it's great to see that we're also thriving in our local businesses, and more businesses are coming online as they see the opportunities in Brisbane to make sure that they can live, work and play in this amazing city. Thank you.
Is there any debate? As there is no debate, we will put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. No, sorry, those against say no. The ayes have it. The report is carried. Councillor Dixon.
Upon a order, Chair. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, report please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of April 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Parry, that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 23rd April 2024 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Murphy here.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Before I speak to the committee report, I just want to take a brief moment to reflect on the tragic incident that occurred on Edward Street last month. As those in the chamber will know, on the 8th of March, a Brisbane City Council bus turning left into Edward Street, left the road and very sadly took the life of Tia Cameron, who was standing on the footpath. I want to share Transport for Brisbane's deepest sympathies with the family and friends of Tia Cameron. This was a truly devastating incident, the kind of incident that shocks and deeply affects our entire community, because no one ever expects anything like this to occur when we go about our daily lives. You would have seen, Mr Deputy Chair, that the Queensland Police Service undertook some onsite testing as part of the investigation just this Sunday gone. Council is doing everything possible to support the QPS through their ongoing investigation. Of course, the impacts of a tragedy like this are felt very widely, and that includes our team in Transport for Brisbane and our bus drivers, and I would dare say the entire organisation that wears the council badge. Our bus drivers, of course, have a critically important role in keeping Brisbane moving. So to all of our bus drivers, I want to say thank you. Your work is vital, and it is appreciated by all residents who rely on our services. We know that it is a difficult job out there on the road, a very, very difficult job. And once again, this chamber is with you every step of the way in that critical service that you provide to the residents of this city. Last week, Chair, during the Transport Committee meeting, we had a joint presentation from both Transport for Brisbane and Brisbane Infrastructure. We had a few newcomers to the Transport Committee this term, so the presentation provided a comprehensive overview of the impactful work that Transport for Brisbane and Brisbane Infrastructure do on a day-to-day basis and across the various major projects that have spanned several years, from the operations of our bus network through to constructing active transport infrastructure. I'm really excited for what lies ahead for the Transport Committee this term. And Team Shrunna is committed to keeping Brisbane moving this term, Chair. Later this year, we will launch Brisbane Metro and will transform the city's entire public transport experience. Along with introducing metro services, we'll also switch on Brisbane's new bus network, delivering 160,000 more trips each and every year for our residents. And with the first stage of Brisbane Metro very close to becoming a reality, we've also got our sights firmly set on the expansion of this project. As you know, Chair, one of the Lord Mayor's key commitments during the 2024 election was to deliver a new Brisbane Metro depot and station for the north of our city at Fitzgibbon. This depot is essential to expanding the fully electric high-frequency metro services into the northern suburbs from the Royal Brisbane Women's Hospital. Unlike those opposite, we know that delivering Brisbane Metro services to the northern suburbs is vital for relieving congestion in this part of the city. We're also looking at how we can make our ferry network even better as well. We're planning to go to tender for Brisbane's first electric ferry, which will help us to modernise and decarbonise our public transport. This term, we will introduce City Cats to Howard Smith Wharves. In fact, actually, this will be done before the end of this financial year, Chair. We're very proud of how our vision for Howard Smith Wharves has come to life, and adding City Cats into this terminal will mean hundreds more services to and from the precinct each and every week, which will make it even easier for residents and visitors to our city to enjoy this incredible part of our lifestyle offering. Earlier this month, we welcomed services to the new Dockside Terminal, and major works are now underway at Mowbray Park. The committee received an update on that matter this morning. These upgrades are much needed, and for that community, Deputy Chair, I would say, are very much longer waited. So it is a great achievement to have the city hopper back servicing Dockside once again. While Mowbray Park is closed for its upgrade, we are encouraging e-mobility as an alternative transport option. Working with our providers, council has supplemented the area with additional devices that residents are able to use, with one of the operators' beam on a 33 cents per minute discount rate. And Chair, that's been a great success so far, with an average of eighty trips being taken per day using that offering to and from the Mowbray Park Terminal. The average length of two kilometres means that most users are travelling into the valley directly or into South Bank via the Goodwill Bridge, sorry, into South Bank or coming into the city via the Goodwill Bridge, I should say. Along with welcoming our new operators on e-mobility, we'll also be celebrating the completion of the Kangaroo Point Bridge, which will provide faster, safer and more direct access for residents to get from the city to Kangaroo Point or from Kangaroo Point to the city. We know this bridge will take an estimated 84,000 cars off the road each and every year, and it will save residents seven minutes of travel time when riding from the Gabba to the CBD. But we aren't just thinking about the city, Deputy Chair, those opposite would lead you to believe, we're also thinking about the suburbs. We will deliver the Prebble Street Bike Way, which will provide a vital off-road connection between Rochedale and Wishart through the Belimba Creek Bike Way in Yorward. Mr Deputy Chair, we'll also be delivering a new connection between the Minippi Bike Way and the Minippi Golf Course, which will provide a dedicated link from Creek Road to the Belimba Creek Bike Way in councillor Atwood's Ward. And importantly, we'll be promoting walking, scooting and riding to school with our new Safe School Precincts Programme. Mr Deputy Chair, the people of Brisbane gave this administration a very strong mandate in March. That mandate is built upon a plan to keep Brisbane moving, and I look forward on delivering our elements of that plan within the transport portfolio this term, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I'd just rise to speak briefly on the Transport Committee introduction. And I note with interest both the report and the chair's comments today about the Brisbane Metro. And interestingly, the Brisbane Metro will be delivered this year, is what I heard now. Yeah, yeah. So I guess the really interesting part of that is, we still don't know the true cost of that project. We don't know how much it will actually overrun by the end of this. We're working in the dark. I suspect in the council budget in June, we're going to see further cost blowouts associated with this as well. But the interesting part of all of this is, the Transport Chair has indicated that he knows what's happening with the bus network review. He hasn't announced that, he hasn't released the bus network review, there's been no further consultation as promised with residents, and residents are still in the dark. Now, I saw during the election campaign that there was some announcement, so clearly the LNP know what's happening with the bus network review. And my understanding is Translink has responded to council, but council has not released the response publicly. So why is that? If the metro is going to be up and running later in the year, and it's now May tomorrow, why is it we don't know how bus networks are going to change in Brisbane? We have to do more consultation with residents, because that's what was promised when the routes were, when the report went to Translink, it was promised there'd be further public consultation. So when's that going to happen? If the council, the LNP is genuine about this bus network review and listening to the community, they'll have to assess that consultation, they'll have to go back to Translink, and this is all supposed to happen, what, in the next seven months, eight months? So the big question we have here is, why is the LNP sitting on the bus network review? Why haven't they released it publicly so residents can fully understand and appreciate the bus changes? And many of them were cuts to routes in suburban areas. Why hasn't the LNP released the bus network review? Why are they hiding it? Why won't they provide it to all councillors? Why won't they release it publicly to the community? So there is a really big problem with the Transport Chair's introductory presentation, where he talks up the metro but is hiding the most, one of the most significant aspects of the Brisbane Metro, which is the changes to all the public bus routes that this council has been lobbying for behind closed doors with Translink. So I call on the Lord Mayor, who's not, who's absent, or the Transport Chair to immediately release the bus network review response from Translink, to outline the timetable for further consultation with the community, and to stop keeping residents in the dark about one of the most significant changes to residents in their local communities that can happen. Now, I remember the last time council stuffed up the bus review back in 2011, 2012, and the outcry from residents was extraordinary. And we can see from the report that was released last year that there is a huge amount of feedback in my ward, in councillor Massey's ward, in other wards around Brisbane, but people want to know what's going on. They want their bus services, their local bus services improved, and they want them protected. And we know that this LNP administration is only interested in cuts. They want to cut routes, they want to cut frequency, and we want to know why they are hiding this bus network review. So again, I call on the Lord Mayor and the Transport Chair to immediately release the Translink response to the bus network review, to come clean with the public about what is proposed with the changes, and to engage in meaningful public consultation and take into account the feedback that residents provide to make sure we get a better bus service out of a $2 billion project, not a worse bus service like out in my area, where they want to cut a local service, the 105, they want to reduce the frequency of other bus services, and we're getting no significant improvements to 95% of bus services in my ward. and we're getting no significant improvements to 95% of bus services in my ward. So it's time for this LNP administration to come clean with the residents of Brisbane and provide the bus network review publicly for all to see and to engage in meaningful consultation on any changes that have been brought forward. And I'm really fascinated to know why councillor Murphy is hiding this information from the Brisbane community.
Any further debate? Councillor Messi?
Thanks, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak briefly about the transport, introductory transport report for Brisbane. You know, I, look, I only got my driver's licence about three years ago, which means I spent most of my life on public transport, walking and cycling. And so for me, transport is something I care very deeply about because it was really important to my life. And the thing that, like, looking through this introductory report, there's a couple of things that I noticed which I found really interesting that were things that we heard were really challenging for people and were challenging for me also when I was predominantly, as I am still today, mostly a public transporter and active transport user. I mean firstly, the reliability of our buses. I think we talked about the network upgrade. Councillor Johnston did talk about the network update. I do know for the network update, the highest consultation numbers were from the Gabba ward, the two highest, South Brisbane and West End. And in my ward, some of the things that people constantly talk about is the lack of reliability of the buses. And we can see here on Transport for Brisbane bus performance that the average running time is about 80%, which basically means that 20% of buses aren't running on time. And in real life, that means one in five buses and that has real life effects for people that need public transport, people that need to get to work on time or people that need to get to their appointments on time. And of course, while the Metro is going to be delivered in the end of the year and we'll move our transport system more to a trunk structure as it's spoken wheel currently, what is still missing from our bus system is actually something radial that connects our suburbs to each other rather than, again, even though it is moving towards trunk, rather than a bus system that leads all roads to the city. When we talk about the buses, like the bus fleet currently and we talk about how our city is moving towards sustainability and yet we can see right now in 2024, currently less than 1.5% of our bus fleet is either electric or the Metro. And what that actually means is that we are not transforming fast enough to face the climate crisis that is ahead of us, noting that there is still, let me just find the page, 953 diesel buses, right? So when we talk about, as often rolled out by this LNP administration, the clean, green and sustainable slogan, our bus fleet is certainly not clean, green and sustainable. And even though we will increase Metro buses to 66%, this still, if we are moving towards more electric rapidly and as soon as possible, this will still mean that nearly 5%, only 9% of our fleet is not diesel or gas. And frankly, that's just not quick enough for the adaptation that we need to face the climate crisis. Another thing that I'll note really quickly because I found the information and I would love some clarity is within this, it says that there's over 11,000 passenger daily trips. So that approximately leads to about 77,000 passengers on the ferries weekly. I'd love a little bit more clarity on that because just a couple of weeks ago, as I thanked last week, councillor Murphy was at a Kangaroo Point residents' meeting and stated that Dockside Ferry would need at least 15,000 trips weekly to even be considered as a City Cat terminal, even if temporary. And the numbers just don't seem to add up on that. So I'd love a little bit more clarity because I know that the residents in Kangaroo Point would love a little bit more clarity. And of course, you know, while there is work being done on our active transport network and this talks about top line figures in our active transport network, I think all of us, and this includes the councils on the other side, know that so many of our bikeways and in dead ends, they are unsafe on dangerous roads and that we don't have enough safe pedestrian crossings or intersected crossings across this city. We know that deaths happen almost weekly from tragic, tragic accidents across the city. And people do get hit by cars because it's unsafe. So look, while I am saddened to not be on the committee anymore, as you can tell, I am very passionate about transport. Very, very passionate about transport. I don't think the Metro will solve our problems, though it might help a little, but just a little. But without any vision or investment to increase the uptake of public transport by making it more frequent, reliable and low cost, if we do not spend the investment to make our active transport connected and safe, our city will continue to remain congested and car-dependent and we see that every day in the Gabba. I have residents who have moved into the Gabba and are stuck on a bus for 40 minutes and it was quicker for them out in the suburbs. So look, I'm looking forward to seeing what the work of the Transport Committee does in the future. I also call for more information for the network review and to see where we're at. I think it's important the consultation continues because that's what our residents were promised. And I hope that consultation and the feedback from all the residents across the wards that we represent is actually seen and recognised in that network review. And while I look forward to seeing the work of the Transportation Committee, I think we have a long, long way to go for Brisbane.
Any further debate? Councillor Collier?
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd just rise to speak briefly on the Transport Committee report before us today. Obviously, it's such a privilege to serve on this committee on one of the most critical issues facing our city and that is the fact that in Australia, Brisbane is the most congested city. And that is a direct result of the lack of forward planning and vision by this current council. So the opportunity to not only hear about what is happening, I guess, and the priorities of this current administration also highlights what this current council is not doing. And what we discussed in the Transport Committee report was patronage. And I think out of context, it, you know, doesn't entirely stack up because we know that over the last 10 years, Brisbane has seen a huge amount of population growth in our suburbs. And what we do know though is that our bus network and our ferry network is travelling millions of passengers less. So whilst it's very easy to spin the numbers to suit yourselves, the reality is, is that far, far less people are taking up the opportunity to get on public transport. And what we need to do, we know, the research shows that to incentivise people to get on public transport, the services need to reflect what communities want and they need to be reliable, absolutely. And I guess from hearing, you know, what the administration has outlined as their priorities, I think we're going to fall short yet again because for the third council term in a row, this council's solution to addressing the congestion crisis is a single project. It's the Metro. And it, sure, that's fine, but it replaces existing services and doesn't actually increase patronage to the network. So I would love to hear more from the current council about how we are going to address congestion. I know that every single councillor would get the complaint or the comment to them all the time. We are sitting in traffic and when you are sitting in traffic every single day, it means that you are spending less time at home with your family. You're spending less time in local parks and playgrounds. You're spending less time going out and experiencing, you know, the great arts and culture that our city has to offer, supporting local businesses. And not only does it have a huge economic impact, it has a huge emotional impact on people when they are stuck in traffic, whether they are in a car or on a bus. And, you know, I could go on and on about the absolute abysmal failure of this council to invest in any real meaningful active transport infrastructure in the suburbs. The users come and see me all the time and, you know, I myself, having been in a serious bicycle accident and the reason why I don't ride a bike anymore was because of a lack of infrastructure. I was hospitalized because of that. And, you know, like, that's the very real impact of not investing. So there may be numbers on a spreadsheet to this council, but the impact of not investing in active transport infrastructure in our suburbs mean that children are at risk. They won't take walk or take their bikes to school. So it is disappointing, I guess, to hear that it is just business as usual and on with the status quo from this current council administration. But on this side of the chamber, we will not give up fighting for what is right.
Any further debate? No one's rising. Councillor Murphy, right up with reply.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Deputy Chair, and appreciate all councillors who've contributed to the debate on this report which introduces the Transport Committee and describes some of the things that we do. And it was a very spirited debate, given that the content was actually not that, not that interesting in terms of controversial. But I think there's a few things I just wanted to cover off on. Probably just back where we started this debate, councillor Johnston. You know, just very briefly, Deputy Chair, we will be closing the loop with Brisbane's new bus network. We will be going back to the community and explaining some of the changes that we've made to the network that Translink have approved. There haven't been many changes. And ultimately, most of the changes that have been made are sensible and as a result of feedback from the community. So we look forward to having a discussion with the community about those. That won't be further consultation in the strictest sense. That will be more of a information about the changes as we lead into the Metro network being implemented and those final changes being made to the network. So we will be closing the loop to answer your question, councillor Johnston. In terms of the cost of Metro, I've almost given up on explaining to Labor councillors the costs and how they've worked because it doesn't really matter what I say. They will claim 1.7, 1.8, 1.9, 2, 2.1 billion dollars. They've made all sorts of outrageous claims on the cost of Brisbane Metro, so it doesn't matter. The truth will come out eventually that the cost is very much the same as it was when we announced the original cost increase from $944 million to $1.244 billion. So that is the cost of Brisbane Metro and things have not changed substantially since that time. In terms of councillor Massey, councillor Massey raised some issues about bus reliability and one of the major issues that affects bus reliability in a mixed or hybrid travelling environment like Brisbane is that buses do have to share the general road network with traffic. And as we know, as Brisbane's population grows, the traffic in this city grows and buses have to share those roads and buses are slowed down by the traffic on those roads. We don't have a problem necessarily with bus congestion on the broader busway except for in the inner-city core, which is the entire objective of Brisbane Metro, to unclog the congestion on the busway in the inner-city core. And when it comes to tackling congestion outside of the busway on the general traffic network, well, I don't think the Greens have the answer for that, Mr. Deputy Chair, because they oppose any and all road upgrades would add capacity into that network to be able to deal with that additional traffic. In terms of the request that councillor Massey had around the radial network, and I was interested to hear that because no doubt if councillor Massey is a strong consumer of bus products in this city, then she would no doubt have heard of the Great Circle Line, the 599 and the 598, which is indeed a radial route that was not implemented by this council but by a previous Labor administration. It travels around the entire city and it is, it is a relatively popular service with some sections of the community who, where the bus travels through that community. But I will, I will not say that that service is setting the world on fire with its patronage, Chair. It's been going on for a very long time. There are other cities that have radial systems like that that have split them up and actually made them much more successful. And I appoint councillor Massey to London's Superloop, which is a TFL service, which has made a very successful radial line. So that is definitely something that we would like to see be, become better. Once again, council doesn't plan the network. Translink plans the network. And well, one of the reasons that we implemented Brisbane Metro was because Translink has done effectively nothing with this network in 10 years and starved it of growth funding. So, you know, that is a serious issue. In terms of the issue she raised in relation to the 15,000 trips at Mowbray Park, I didn't, I never said councillor Massey that Mowbray Park needed to get to 15, sorry, Dockside needed to get to 15,000 trips like Mowbray Park in order to get a ferry. All I said to the residents was these are the levels of patronage that support a City Cat stopping there. And so the, you know, Dockside is nowhere near that. So, you know, we would need to see evidence that Dockside can support those level of trip numbers before we add a City Cat in, not that necessarily 15,000 people would need to be boarding the City Hopper because I think that is a very unlikely circumstance indeed. In terms of, you know, councillor Massey also raised congestion on the bus network in and around the Gabba and I can only assume she's referring to services like the Blue City Glider and other buses that run throughout what is one of the most transport-rich communities in this entire city, the Gabba ward with more ferry terminals, more bus stations, more options for e-mobility than any other part of the city virtually other than the CBD. Well, councillor Massey, it is hard to have it both ways. We are working on fixing the issues with the trunk and feeder network at the moment, which is all about Brisbane Metro. We actually need to get that system working before we can work on, you know, the radial network. So you can't have it both ways. You cannot complain about congestion in one of the most richly served transport districts in the city and say we're not doing enough there, but also we want a radial network. You know, you cannot have your cake and eat it too. This council is already doing the heavy lifting for the state when it comes to transport and we, we are already delivering the most complex project that council has ever delivered with Brisbane Metro, which is a gift to the state government that they are not grateful for. Now councillor Collier raised patronage as an issue. This is a very timely issue, councillor Collier. Today in City Hall, right now, there is a conference going on called PTAN, the Public Transport Association of Australia and New Zealand. There are delegates from all around Southeast Asia, as far away as London. I met with the head of Public Transport for London just yesterday, that are coming here to City Hall to talk about the issues with public transport. And guess what? They all have this issue in common. Patronage is down since COVID because we told the public to stop catching public tra- Sorry, there were some interjections there, Deputy Chair. During COVID, governments all around the world told the public to stop catching public transport. And you know what they did? They listened. And so many of them have stopped catching public transport and have not restarted catching public transport. Also, many of the old habits that we used to have in terms of commuting into the city for work have gone the way of the dodo with telecommuting and Teams and Zoom. So this is a shared problem amongst every public transport organisation in the world. It's not unique to Brisbane and there is, there is nothing that this administration has done that has caused that. We are all dealing with this and we are all trying to find a way out. In terms of, one thing that will be interesting is in terms of investment, this year this council will spend just shy of $700 million on public transport in this city as a combination of capital, CapEx and OpEx. The state government will spend $400 million in OpEx on Brisbane's bus network. This is speaking strictly to buses. I know there are investments in Cross River Rail and other services. So, you know, what, I would ask the opposition, what more can we do for an organisation of our size without literally robbing Peter to pay Paul and doing the state government's job for them? We already do so much for the state government. We really need them to step up and make an investment in transport here in this city. And we'll be having more to say about that over the next few weeks. I can tell you that, Mr. Deputy Chair. One thing I would like to see from the opposition is just once the opposition get up and actually call on the state government to invest in public transport in this city, in the bus network, in the network that two-thirds of all public transport commuters use. Because I have yet to see them- Because I have yet to see them get up even once and criticise their state colleagues who have starved this city of funding while they have given money to the Redlands, while they have given money to Moreton Bay, while they have given money to Ipswich, while they have given money to Scenic Rim, while they have spent God knows how much money on the Gold Coast and on Sunshine Coast. But what is the city that gets robbed of public transport investment, Deputy Chair? Brisbane. But you will not see those Brisbane city councillors ever stand up and point that out. I'll leave for the, well, thanks very much, Chair. We'll wrap up there.
We will now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye? Against say no? The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
Yep, it is moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Toomey. Let the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 23rd of April, 2024, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. The committee, like many committees, considered and presented to the committee members an overview of what each division of our organisation did and what each program area did. So can I thank our divisional manager, Mr Scott Stewart, for providing the presentation to councillors and for his overview of what is within the infrastructure programme? So, of course, sometimes there's some confusion. And when I say sometimes, I mean often. Because I see the things that are later the feet of the infrastructure team, of the Brisbane Infrastructure Division and the branches within it, and they are not, they are not within our area. Even at this morning's committee, I was being asked about where particular bus stops would be located in relation to the metro projects. And of course, metro has existed within the Transport Division for some time. So I thought it was important that we took time like this to remind councillors of where things are, how they work, and who looks after them. So Mr Stewart provided a committee with an introduction about his division and outlined the strategic framework and operational structure of BI. BI is a division that brings together councils, assets management, infrastructure planning, design, project management, construction services, maintenance and transport operation activities. So Mr Stewart highlighted many roles, including the principal ones that fall within BI. That's, of course, BI generally within the CPO, there is asset management and TPO. Within BI, there is another group called City Standards that has its own program area and its own committee. And I think often that that distinction is lost to a lot of people, but it's an important one for the operation and administration of this council. Mr Stewart presented the asset management's role and recognised that team for the efforts that they make to set standards within the organisation that are then delivered by other parts of the organisation. Sometimes there's a view that the asset management team, which comparatively is a relatively small team, is the group of people who are responsible for the maintenance and delivery of items. They are not. They are a policy group who set the standards of the assets owned by this organisation and then inform other groups within the council of what is to happen in those sections. So it's a distinction that may be confusing to people, because they're called asset management, but they sit in behind the delivery framework. They set the framework so that other parts of council can deliver the framework. So can I just preempt? If anybody takes this opportunity to make a pointless and meandering speech about the standard to footpaths, that is not asset management, all right? Asset management is not that group, all right? That is a different group. I feel that I will say this again tonight somehow. Can I also recognise that the Transport Planning Operations Branch, who a lot of councillors deal with on a regular basis, they would present to most councillors as the team of people who look after signs and lines and other on-street operations. They also have responsibility for minor traffic and transport works, such as local area traffic management projects and things like this. Then, of course, the City Projects Office, which is the large-scale delivery arm of this organisation. Within that, there's, of course, major projects. And then there's other projects, which you have, things like civil and transport civic projects. And then you have also in that what some councillors would recall a city design, but it's, of course, the design component of our organisation as well. So there was also a moment taken for City Standards, but that is principally a different delivery stream. There were three petitions considered on a range of matters within the BI area, some on traffic calming, some on intersection upgrades, some on corridor management. They are varied, and I look forward to the contributions of local councillors on those matters.
Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. I'm going to speak on item C, petition requesting council postpone proposed changes to the intersections of Brighton Road and Fourth and Fifth Avenues. But also ask at the outset that C and D are taken seriatum for voting. So it'd be A and B together, then C and D together. In speaking on item C here, this was a frustratingly slow process to see this petition response come to council. And I spent months going backwards and forwards with the council officers who were seeking my feedback on the proposed response, which I ultimately didn't support, because I had one very simple question, which seemed to be almost impossible to be answered. And that was whether this project was still funded, whether there was still money allocated for this project to be consulted on or not going forward. And I don't know why it took three or four backwards and forwards emails of me asking the same question and not getting an answer until I finally, finally received the answer that the funding was cut for this project, in fact. So it makes the petition response a moot point, I guess, because the Lord Mayor clearly used this petition as an opportunity to cut funding for this vital pedestrian safety upgrade. So what this project is about is upgrading the pedestrian crossings near Fourth and Fifth Avenue on Brighton Road in Sangate, which, for councillors who aren't familiar with Sangate, Brighton Road is the main street, where the Ironbump and Lagoon fronts, where most of our local businesses front, the main street of Sangate. Wombat crossings or raised platforms as a safety upgrade to these pedestrian crossings has been in budget submissions from my very first one as a councillor, and I know they predate me to the previous councillor as well. And I was thrilled to see that funding was allocated to this project, to see this pedestrian safety upgrade occur two budgets ago now. It was carried over well before this petition was started, from two budgets ago to last budget. And now I've found out it's been cut entirely. The petition that we have before us today actually followed the formal and official consultation process, which council did undertake. And I participated in as a local councillor. And the person who started the petition was consulted as a local resident in the local street there. And I accept and understand that he didn't support the project or one element of the project and decided to start a petition, even though the consultation was successful and council was proceeding with this project with my support as the local councillor. But the petition presented options that were simply not possible. These are options that I know council officers investigated. I asked them to look at it again after I went myself and looked at other options. And neighbouring councils went over to Regcliff to look at how they've dealt with drainage issues around raised platforms and things like that. We tried very hard to look at other options. But in the end, council officers' advice continued to be that what was proposed, which included banning a right turn from Fourth Avenue into Brighton Road, because it would otherwise have made the pedestrian crossing non-compliant, was the only option going forward. So I supported the position of council, of council officers, and had some tough conversations with local residents who were not happy about that action. But given this is such a critical and important safety upgrade, I thought that was the right thing to do. I myself have nearly been hit on the Fifth Avenue pedestrian crossing. I know a police officer working at the Sangate Police Station, which is, their doorstep is basically at the pedestrian crossing on Fifth Avenue, was nearly hit while she was pregnant. There are countless other people who have been nearly hit on these pedestrian crossings, hence why it received funding in the council budget at the request of council officers, and me as the local councillor, two budgets ago, finally, and that had carried forward. However, to now find out that the petition response here is that somehow more consultation needs to occur, on what, I'm not sure. On the option that was presented to the community, on different options that council officers said are simply not possible. I'm not sure who's carrying out that consultation, on what changes need to be consulted on, and whether that can even occur now that the project has effectively been cancelled. So that's the reason I didn't support the recommendation before us today. I support the project, and I'll put that on record, even if we have to make a tough decision. And not everybody in the community is supportive of that, because it's about pedestrian safety. It's about making sure that these crossings are compliant and about making sure our community is walkable and safe for everybody. So, yeah, I can't support the recommendation before us today, but I put on record that I do support this project. And I've continued to call for it to be funded in the upcoming council budget. And I just think we need to make a decision to address this critical safety issue once and for all.
Any further debate? No? Councillor Wines, write off a reply. No? Now I'll put the vote, item A and B to the vote. All those in favour say aye? Against say no? The ayes have it. We will now put item C and D to the vote. All those in favour say aye? Against say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Councillor's eyes to my right and nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Please close the, um, yeah. Please close, um, yeah. Councillors do have the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and 7 against.
The reports of, the items are carried.
Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2024, be adopted.
It is being moved-
Seconded.
It is being moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Wolf, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2024, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week's committee was provided with an overview of how planning and development are undertaken within council. And as the other committee reports have indicated, they all seem to go down this path in the start of the new council term of just outlining the key functions of each of the portfolios. As many in this chamber would be aware, the state government sets out the planning framework for Queensland through the Planning Act 2016 and Supporting Planning Regulation 2017. Any amendments to our planning scheme, which is City Plan 2014, need to follow the processes set out in the Minister's Guidelines and Rules. These guidelines and rules also specify the sequence of council and state government decisions and any public consultation requirements depending on the sections of City Plan being amended. It is our city plan that provides a strategic framework for planning in Brisbane and specifically details the preferred sustainable growth and servicing for Brisbane. This framework is supported by a range of zones, overlays and neighbourhood plans, which set out important considerations and expectations for developments in different parts of the city. Council's Neighbourhood Planning Programme commenced in 2006 and has worked with the community on 84 neighbourhood plans. This programme ensures neighbourhoods are ready to grow while keeping the elements valued by those local communities. In the last 10 years, neighbourhood plans have facilitated an additional 62,000 homes. The committee also received a briefing on the four key policy documents for Programme Four, including Brisbane, Our Productive City, which was released in October 2022, Brisbane's Sustainable Growth Strategy, which was released in March 2023, Brisbane's Housing Supply Action Plan, which was released in October 2023, and Brisbane's Inner City Strategy, released April 2023. The committee also received an update on our Development Services team and several key activities they undertake. In 2023, Development Services achieved the following. They completed 690 pre-lodgment meetings. They assessed 3,586 development applications. They assessed 1,326 operational works applications, processed 588 plant sealing applications, completed 32,291 plumbing inspections and approved 7,313 plumbing permits. Our Development Services General Manager also outlined to the committee the two online services council provides, specifically City Plan Online and Developman i. Both services ensure customers can access information on properties and approved and proposed developments. Development Services also assist residents through the Planning Information Office, who are a team of town planners who are able to assist with general planning inquiries. Inquiries typically relate to renovations, traditional building character houses, granny flats, home businesses, flood overlay requirements, carports, multiple dwellings and subdivisions. Council's 24-hour contact centre is available to assist customers with simple planning and development applications and development advice, as well as food licensing and advertising sign advice. Development Services also delivers weekly talk-to-a-planner events throughout the year. These events consist of a 15-minute one-on-one session with a town planner, which helps residents, business owners and community groups learn more about City Plan and how it relates to their building and construction plans. Madam Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Sefford. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I just tries to speak on the presentation for the City Planning Suburban Renewal Committee. It's been a while since I've been on that committee, so it's good to be back. And I was very interested in the reintroduction, I guess, into what's happening. And I guess, you know, we all see some of the things that councillor Allen spoke about come through here, City Plan amendments, the Housing Supply Action Plan and other documents. And the one that I was most interested in during the presentation and asked some questions about was the Housing Supply Action Plan, otherwise known as, and I'm getting that right, I know, the Housing Homelessness Strategy, otherwise known as Housing Supply Action Plan, which is not the City Plan, obviously, but it's a strategy document that is to inform changes to City Plan. Now, when it was released with great fanfare by the deputy mayor, and I get there are certain precincts within that that are contained within the economic development portfolio, but overall, changes to City Plan as a result of those decisions by the administration are handled by councillor Allen. So we saw, obviously, the first cab off the rank for that was the TLPI, which then comes into effect. That plan had a whole lot of specific locations for increased density to help address Brisbane's homelessness and housing crisis. It was released last year as a document with urgent and immediate actions that this administration was going to take as their solution at a council level. was going to take as their solution at a council level to the housing and homelessness crisis that is gripping our city. They were very quick to get the KIRILPA plan started, the TLPI passed through here, up to the state government through amendments, then adopted. So I was very interested to find out what the next cab off the rank is. Is it Hamilton Road at Cherm Side, which is identified in the plan specifically? Is it the three specific sites identified in Winham, in the Winham Town Centre? Or is it Lutwich Road at Lutwich, the specific sites that were identified there? There's a whole lot, or Carandale Shopping Centre, or other places around the city. And the answer I got was pretty puzzling and perplexing, Chair, in that councillor Allen said that, well, work's going on behind the scenes, but the administration clearly, from that response and the slow work that's been going on there, don't actually see that as much of a priority. So why they were so quick to get KIRILPA out the gate, but then not any of the others, seems a bit strange to me, when it's supposed to be an immediate response to the housing and homelessness crisis that is facing Brisbane. Probably not so surprising when you really consider the driver behind the changes that we see coming through, when we look at the locations that are in that strategy. So KIRILPA are obviously number one, we found out through the debate from the deputy mayor that it was developer-led. So the changes and the locations and the density were largely developer-led, and councillor Allen let slip that's also the process of which they're going through for other amendments to City Plan that are identified, and increasing density in the precincts are identified in the Housing Supply Action Plan. So that's not a very good way of planning for future growth in addressing our housing and homelessness crisis, you would think. That's the document, that's the main one, that is this council's response. And I thought going in last week, we would definitely have that front and centre. That would be the first and foremost thing, because we get, we hear, week after week, the last two meetings we've had here in this term, and all the meetings we had towards the end of last term, the Lord Mayor and LNP chairs get up and blame Labour councillors for apparently stopping development. We hear that week in, week out. But the levers in which this administration can pull are clearly being slowed right down. They're developer-led to start with, to obviously maximise yields and profits, one, but secondly, they're not about getting a genuine policy response to a housing and homelessness crisis. They're clearly just a business-as-usual planning process, that instead of being done all out in the open, with the community as the first port of call, they're now being done largely behind closed doors with developers as the first port of call, and then the community sees the draft that is already developed once it is released. So I'm a bit disappointed, I have to say, in the presentation. I get the facts and figures and what councillor Allen said about the number of pre-lodgment meetings, that's all fine and good, and that's factual, but in terms of a policy response, I would have thought, the very first meeting, you come out, out the gate, urgently addressing the housing and homelessness crisis our city faces with every single lever that this council can pull? And it was crickets. It was crickets. There was nothing in the presentation, and even when we asked questions, the information that we received as committee members was, look, there's something happening behind scenes, but that's not for you to know as a councillor, as a member of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee. So extremely disappointing, and I certainly hope councillor Allen will lift his game this term.
Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, on the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, it is quite fascinating that councillor Allen talks about the way in which council has to work to the control of the state government. And yet, one of the things he's left out is the status of the L-Gip. Now, where's that? I mean, just like councillor Murphy, the L-Gip has gone missing in action. We don't know if it's still with the state, we don't know if it's here with council. What we do know is the LNP administration is again hiding a major piece of our policy work, and has not brought it back to this council or to the public for consideration. There were major changes in the documents, and this administration has been sitting on them for well over a year now. Where are they? What's going on? You know, we're an Olympic city. We haven't met our planning commitments to the state government. So, yeah, seven years, so eight years. Where's the L-Gip? That's what I'd like to know. What I'd really like to know is what these chairs have actually been doing. You know, they are paid extra to do this kind of work. You never hear from them about what's happening. There are massive delays with the timing from what they say will happen. And I'm sure councillor Allen's going to hop up and blame the state government, but I will, I will put money on the fact that it's probably sitting in this council administration, like councillor Murphy in the Translink review, which I understood they've had for months and months and months, and they've just chosen not to publicly release it.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillor Allen, your point of order.
Well, you know, listening to councillor Johnston talk about L-Gips, you know, entertaining, it's not actually mentioned in the report, and, you know, if she wants to take that up as a separate exercise, fine, do it in another situation.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Johnston, it isn't in the report. Can you please just stick to the report? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I'm speaking to paragraph three, which is the Queensland Government Planning Requirements for councils, and that sets out the framework under the Planning Act and the Planning Act Regulations, and amendments to the Planning Scheme Brisbane City Council, which follows the minister's rules and guidelines. Now, I was only on the planning committee briefly, but it is my understanding, it is a state government responsibility that we have an L-Gip. And it is my understanding, and perhaps councillor Allen had the biggest scare of his life in the last few weeks, and he's forgotten that it's a state government requirement.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Allen.
References are made in the covering summary or the report about L-Gip.
Councillor Johnston, could you please have relevance to the report?
Yes, thank you so much. And...
I have asked you once to come back to relevance.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And again, I'm pointing to paragraph three, which talks about the state government planning responsibilities that council has to meet, which councillor Allen has referred to here today, and I'm pointing to the fact that the LNP administration is sitting on one of those reports.
And councillor Johnston, I'll just interrupt you there, that is not relevant to the report, that's exactly what we're saying, that is not in the report, and I ask you to remain relevant. Please continue, but remain relevant to the things that were discussed in this report.
Okay, just to be clear, paragraph three says, the Queensland Government provides direction on planning requirements at the state...
Councillor Johnston, I'm not going to debate it, and I'm not going to repeat. If you do not remain relevant to the report, I will ask you to finish.
I'm actually reading from paragraph three. How is that not relevant? Are you saying that me reading from the report is not...
I've made a ruling, and I've asked you to remain relevant to the report, please.
Are you saying that I can't read from the actual paragraph three of the report? That that's not relevant?
Councillor Johnston, you and I both know that you're not doing that, and we know that you are digressing and talking about other... Excuse me, councillors, you are not to debate with me. I make the decision, and I have made my decision. Councillor Johnston, please stick to what was in the report.
Point of order, Chair.
Like the twelve-thousand-dollar fundraising...
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Just seeking your ruling, when a councillor is directly referring to the report that is literally before us today, you've ruled that out of order on relevance.
Councillor Collier, I was in the committee, and I've read the report, and yes, I've made a ruling that she's not sticking to the report. Thank you.
Sorry, just seeking clarification, Chair.
I just gave it to you. Please take your seat.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Collier, what is your point of order?
Just seeking clarification on your ruling, Chair. Is reading verbatim from a committee report not relevant?
Councillor Collier, I'll say it slowly. The L-Gip is not in the report. She can read number three all she likes, but it is not there in the report. I suggest you take...
That's not my question, Chair.
Councillor Collier, I'm not debating you. I suggest you take another look at the report. Sit down, please.
Sorry, Chair, that wasn't my question.
Councillor Collier, again. Councillor Johnston can read that from the report, but she... And you can't call out while I'm speaking, and across the chamber either. I will. Councillor Johnston, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section twenty-one-four of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, and I hereby request you to refrain from calling out across the chamber. And councillor Collier, if you continue, you will be warned as well. Councillor Johnston, do you have any...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Just, again, seeking your clarification on the question that I've asked.
My clarification is that you cannot ask another point of order on the same thing that I have just cleared up with you.
I just, generally, speaking generally?
Councillor Collier, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with section twenty-one-four of the Meeting's Local Law, I hereby request that you refrain from continuing this behaviour. Please return to your seat.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Massey.
Just like a clarification, if I am looking at the report that is in within the council meeting, that I'm looking at right now on my computer, and it says it is the report, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report, which is on my laptop, and I scroll down and I say, read a paragraph from it, in that report, is that not relevant to the debate?
Councillor Massey, I've already given my ruling on this point of order...
It was a different point of order.
And only one... Yeah, and I'm not debating it. If the Chair forms the view that a councillor is obstructing the meeting by making excessive points of order during another councillor's speech, then I will rule that no further points of order will be made. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yeah. I'm definitely speaking on the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Well, I suggest you remain relevant.
I would hope that I would not be interrupted, but I'm...
Again, I'm not asking for a debate. Continue.
In fact, you did invite me to debate the matter, and that's what I'm intending to do.
Councillor Johnston, you've been asked to debate the report. Stick to it.
I'm attempting to do that, and you are not letting me. That is the problem here. Now, it's astonishing to me that this little episode has just happened. This is, this committee report, for those watching at home, and I hope there'll be a lot of people watching at home, Understanding Planning in Council, that's the name of this report before us today. And what councillor Allen has outlined is the policy framework and the legislative framework for how changes to City Plan are made in Brisbane City Council. And, oh my goodness, what forms part of City Plan? What forms part of the Planning Act? What forms part of the minister's rules and guidance? The L-Gip. The L-Gip. It is fascinating to me that this administration, both through the Chair and the Planning Chairperson, want to deny that the L-Gip is actually part of City Plan 2014. I think that perhaps they missed the point of their presentation, which is Understanding Planning in Council. My issue here, of course, is one of secrecy and inaction by the LNP. Where is the L-Gip? Why has it not been returned? Why is it not being made public after a year of waiting or longer? Why is it that this administration wants to hide it, as they're trying to do here today? And why is it that even reading a line or two from this report that I was doing, apparently is a breach of the rules in this place? What is wrong with this LNP administration, that they don't want to be accountable for the policy decisions, for amendments to City Plan, that they are required to make by the state government? Now, instead of hopping up at the end of this speech and saying, well, it's all the state government's fault, and she doesn't know what she's talking about, I've been told I can't speak about it. Now, just like councillor Murphy earlier today, my question to the Planning Chairperson is, where is the L-Gip? Where is it? Are you sitting on it like councillor Murphy is sitting on the bus network review? He's had that one for months. How long have you had the L-Gip? Where is it?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor...
I know, I've just come back in, but we're not in GB, are we? Are we talking about the planning report, the report in front of us?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor, again. Councillor?
There's another former Planning Chairperson that doesn't realise the L-Gip is part of City Plan 2014.
Councillor Johnston, there are many elements to it.
Yes, there are.
But that is not what we are talking about in this report.
Yes, it is.
And as you continue to fail to comply with my request to stick to the relevance, I will ask you to sit down, please, and call for any further debate.
So can you please tell me where in the rules it says you can tell me to, quote, "sit down"?
Councillor Johnston?
Could you please advise me, under the Meeting's Local Law, Madam Chair, where it says you can tell me to sit down?
I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this remprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting, and you have been given ample time in which to speak to the report, and you continue to fail to do that. So I do ask you to take your seat and allow another councillor to speak if they are going to speak to the report. Thank you.
Madam Chair, no, I'm sorry. I would like to know where it says in the Meeting's Local Law that you have the authority to tell me to, quote, "sit down".
Councillor Johnston, I can make a ruling to ask you to finish speaking and take your seat.
Can you please point me...
And I have done that. So I ask you to do...
Can you please point me to the rule that says you can tell me to sit down?
Stop speaking over the top of me as I'm speaking, and please take your seat.
Madam Chairman, I'm seeking a procedural clarification about where you can tell me to sit down.
Deputy Mayor, can you please call for a motion for ten minutes so that the chamber can calm down?
I move that we recess for ten minutes until the bells ring, so the chamber can calm down. Seconded.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor has moved that we take recess for ten minutes, seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Against say no?
No!
The ayes have it.
Division.
A division has been called by councillor, is it Johnston? And seconded by... Who was it? Councillor Massey, no. Can you please read the numbers?
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and eight against.
The motion is carried. Councilors will vacate the chamber for ten minutes. Thank you, councillors, and I will read out section thirty-five-seven. During debate on the motion, the Chair may rule out of order any aspects of the debate which do not relate to the specific subject matter under debate, and may direct that the issue be raised during general business. So I do request councillor Johnston that you raise it during general business, please.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
But you do have further time to speak if you would like to continue.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, you've issued an invalid ruling to require me to sit down on multiple occasions, and warned me without the authority to do so, which goes into the official record and onto my disciplinary record, which the LNP then uses against me in the OI. and onto my disciplinary record, which the L N P then uses against me in the O I A. How are you going to remove your mistakes from this meeting with respect to your previous rulings about me?
councillor Johnston, the reason that you were warned was because you continued to speak over the top of me and continued to go back to speaking in, not speaking to the report, and that is the reason that you were warned. But you still have, I believe, a good minute in which to continue with the report. So I ask that you please do that.
Point of order.
And then raise your, in general business. What's your point of order?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, what you've just said then is actually not what you warned me for. You were very clear. You have warned me for something you had no authority to do. You requested me to do something you had no authority to do. And I would like to know how you are going to, to change the official warning that you've put on my record, because what you've said now is not what you warned me for.
councillor Johnston, I do not uphold your point of order.
Thank you. I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded. Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
A division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Councillors, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and seventeen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Are there any further speakers? councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on the report. I sat into the meeting last week and, you know, we went through the report for the city plan and various other things that were connected to the city plan and of course some of the strategy that was used. What I found really interesting about the city plan, especially the Housing Action Supply Plan and also connected to the T L P I, K R I L P A, was of course a question that was actually asked during that period, which was connecting to the other areas of priority growth that was included into this plan, I think councillor, sorry, councillor Allen, well, previously Deputy Mayor Adams had referred to Mount Gravat, Cherm Side, Newstead and other areas. And councillor Cassidy actually asked a question during the meeting about how do these plans get created? Is it within the department or not? And of course, the answer was really interesting, and I know councillor Cassidy touched on this earlier. And that it was that the department itself looked at some of the precinct plannings and looked at their feasibility. Or a large development application would actually lead it and lead a feasibility study. And of course, I found that incredibly interesting because last week in this chamber, I asked about the T L P I and the lack of developments and its planning. And councillor Allen stood up and said, that's, you've directed the question to the wrong person. However, it is actually his department. That, and it became clear from that meeting, it was his department that actually said, "We investigate precinct plans similar to the T L P I." And so the reason I'm standing here today to mention that after we saw what just happened beforehand, is clearly this council does not want to answer questions. This council does not want to give information. And this is something that is constant. We're seeing this more and more and more as we only start, remembering this is only our second meeting. What we're seeing here is a stifling of debate, a stifling of information and an unwillingness to answer questions. And this is a pretty terrible start to what is four years. And to me, that's completely concerning. You know, what we, what I understood in this presentation and also through the answering of questions through that committee was that it was that councillor Allen's department's responsibility for the investigation of precinct planning. And yet councillor Allen was unwilling to answer the question publicly last week. What we just saw beforehand was a stifling about the local government infrastructure plan, which is undeniably a part of the planning scheme and under the department. And so for, to me, and I just want to put this on the record, especially for people at home, we are seeing the erosion of debate. We are seeing the erosion of information transfer where opposition councillors are being stifled and stopped. And this is a problem.
Any further speakers Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I speak on the report about what is dealt with in the City Planning Portfolio and to refute the absolute rubbish we just heard from the councillor for the Gabba, who obviously does not understand how council works, even though we have tried many times to explain this. Councillor Massey stood here and said, "We are stifling debate. We won't answer questions. We're hiding it all. You don't know where it is."
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Massey.
Relevance to the report.
I believe you did talk about the Deputy Mayor and, and she's responding to your, what you, what you actually said. Please, please come around to the report Deputy Mayor.
As I said, what is in the City Planning Committee and the responsibilities? And I know councillor Massey hasn't been here for a very long time, but let's be very clear about how council works. There are many areas with many portfolios and those areas work across portfolios. Urban planning and strategy sits under C P E D. C P E D councillor Massey, as was mentioned in the report last week, C P E D is city planning and economic development. C P E D has urban strategy in it. Urban strategy reports to councillor Allen if it is suburban renewal and reports to me if it is urban renewal. We have now said this three times since we went through portfolio roles in the last month. So I do not want to hear again this nonsense that we're stifling debate and we won't answer questions because we are told again and again to stick to the rules. And the rules are, the Chairs answer questions in their relevant portfolio. And as was in the report last week for the city planning area, councillor Allen does suburban renewal. Urban planning reports to me for urban renewal. Very simple. No tinfoil hats required here for the conspiracies of stifling debate. Understand how council works.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I don't see where any of what councillor Adams is saying is actually in this report about her responsibilities. This is about councillor. This is councillor Allen's area of responsibility in his report. So I'm just wondering whether what councillor Adams is saying about her areas of responsibility, which are not in this report, are relevant.
Thank you councillor Johnston. Deputy Mayor, can you speak to the report?
Okay, I'll say it again. The report before us is about C P E D, about the City Planning Portfolio and what is actually managed in the City Planning Portfolio. And what is managed is the suburban renewal, not the urban renewal. And I was just rebutting through my debate and comments on the city planning that councillor Massey was wrong. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? councillor Allen write of reply. We shall now put the motion to the vote. Councillors. All those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee councillor Davis.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday twenty third of April twenty twenty four be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Marks that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday twenty third of April twenty twenty four be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you Madam Chair. Last week's committee, excuse me, presentation was an introduction to the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Portfolio with a focus on our Water, Energy and Environmental Systems Section in News. As you are aware, Madam Chair, from your time on the E P S committee, it is a very big and complex portfolio. The presentation is the first in a three-part series to provide an overview of all things E P S for the benefit of the new committee members. The Water, Energy and Environment Systems Team within News has a broad remit, including everything from waterway health to emissions reduction. And I'd like to thank the officers for a very informative presentation. Madam Chair, we also had a number of other items of business, a park naming, three petitions and an approval for expenditure from the Suburban Enhancement Fund. So I leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Is there any debate? councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A and item B. And I'd ask that item B is taken seriatum for, B E, E for egg, is taken seriatum for voting purposes.
So just clarifying councillor Johnston, only item E taken seriatum for voting.
Yes, thank you. I'll start with item E. Item E is a petition requesting council allocate funding to refresh and extend the car park at Dunlop Park, Corinda. I want to start by reading from paragraph one of the report in case anybody is concerned. And I'm sure it will be interesting to some councillors, particularly I think councillor Allen. These petitions were tabled in August twenty twenty one. That's nearly three years ago, approximately one thousand days ago. One thousand days ago, these petitions were tabled. Now, we heard councillor Allen get up and go nuts at the state government for seventy five days. Like terrible that they're spending seventy five days thinking about something. Well councillor Davis and her news team have spent one thousand days thinking about a petition, which is pretty straightforward. It's fix a car park in a major park that services a pool, a school and a major sporting field. Now, you would think that perhaps there was something new or complex about it. Maybe that's why it took three years to be considered and brought back to council, but sadly no. This is the third time that my community have petitioned to have this car park at Corinda fixed. Now, you wouldn't know that by reading the report before us today, because the report before us today says a couple of things and I'll outline what council is suggesting it's going to do. Firstly, council has listed for consideration to have detailed design which will bring the car park up to current Australian standards and formalise the unsealed section of the car park as part of council's Future Capital Works Programme. Do you know when the first time was that council put that in a petition response in this place? Councillor Davis wasn't here. Does anybody like to guess which year? Anyone who want to guess? Yes, councillor Massey, well done. The first time this request was made to council and this council said it had capital listed the car park repairs was in two thousand and ten. That is fourteen years ago. And at that time, I'm like, okay, that's fine. We'll list it. That's the process. It will get funded in due course. I don't usually vote against other people's stuff, you know, everybody needs to have things done. So that's why I was so interested in the Hawks Car Park up there at Tygham a little earlier today because I've been waiting fourteen years for this car park to be funded. Here are some of the problems with the car park. Failed patches, repeated failed potholes, bays that are less than two metres wide, you can't fit cars in them, trees that drop huge branches, trees in the middle of the car park, bollards that are broken and fall over, signage that is missing. And then we have the major unsealed section of the car park. Now, this car park services the Dunlop Memorial Pool, which is a very busy pool. It services Corinda State School and it services the Dunlop Soccer, the Dunlop Soccer Club and also West Cricket who play on the fields as well as all the recreational sport that happens in this area. Now, fourteen years these residents have been waiting for Capital Works funding to upgrade this car park. Now, we haven't just sat and done nothing. The community tried again in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. And guess what the response was at that time as well? Yes, we will list this car park for Capital Works funding. That was six years ago. Council listed it for Capital Works funding. Now, when a new petition is done in twenty twenty one, calling for essentially the same thing, to fix the broken parts, to repair the damaged parts and then to extend the car park, things that apparently being done there at, at Sandgate at the Hawks, what does this council say it's going to do yet again? Council has listed for consideration detailed design. How do you list something that was listed in two thousand and ten and two thousand and seventeen, eighteen? How do you list it? That's what I'd like to know councillor Davis. You can't. You've already listed it. Does this report mention the history of this situation of abandonment of the people of Corinda at all? Does it mention the history anywhere? No. You know what it goes on to do though? Petitioners meets the requirements of the S E F and the request will be referred to councillor Nicole Johnston, the councillor for Tennyson Ward, for her consideration. And then it says, "Ring councillor Johnston" and puts my phone number in there. "Ring councillor Johnston and put my phone number in there." I've never seen that ever and I've been here sixteen years. And I will be formally taking this up with council. Because what has gone on with this is that residents in the community are publicly being told that I am now responsible for undertaking maintenance works in a car park. That council owns, that council is responsible for, that has been capital listed since two thousand and ten. And this council has put my phone number in there and told residents to call me. Have I, I've never seen it with anybody else. So it is fascinating to me that after three years, council does, or three years, remembering this was tabled in August two thousand and twenty one. Three years ago councillor Davis, you won't put me on the Parks Committee and I know why now, because if I asked questions there, this kind of appalling neglect and bad behaviour by you and your department would have been exposed. A three-year delay on a petition response is not good enough in anyone's terms. To then ignore the fact that this serious safety issue has a long history and not even mention the fact that we have petitioned repeatedly for this to be fixed is appalling. It is, it is deceptive is what I would call it. It makes it seem like this is the first time the issue has been raised. It's the first time it's been listed. This is deceptive behaviour by. This is deceptive behaviour by Brisbane City Council who want to hide 14 years of inaction for our community. This is fixing a car park. It's one of two in the agenda today. And the other one's just as bad, its history is just as bad. But let's say this, for 14 years, this has been capital listed and now council's saying it's going to capital list it. How do you do that, councillor Davis, through you, Madam Chair? And I would like her explanation. Did it drop off the capital list? Did someone take it off when they shouldn't have? Did they forget it was on the capital works list? Why isn't it mentioned in here it's already capital listed? Either in 2010 or again in 2017, 18. Where has it been for three years? And don't blame me, because I can tell you, I've commented and responded every time it's been sent to me. So there's been a massive stuffer, no explanation from councillor Davis. I'm sure she's going to hop up and bag me. But the only people she should be thinking about are her, her staff and her officers, who have categorically failed the residents of Corinda, Oxley and other suburbs in the southwestern suburbs of Brisbane, who use the pool, the school and the soccer fields and are dealing with dangerous situations that have been ignored for 14 years. Even if there's only two or three car park projects done every year in Brisbane, after 14 years, you'd think that one in Tennyson Ward would have got up. But no, it hasn't. And not only that, this is the most deceptive report that I have ever seen. So with that, I'm moving an amendment. I move that on page seven, paragraph 53 recommendation, attachment A, draft recommendation, add a new paragraph three. Council acknowledges that the community has petitioned in 2010, 2017, 18 and in 2021, the current petition, and the car park upgrade and extension has already been capital listed for 14 years. Is in a terrible state and is a high priority for repairs and upgrade. As such, council will prioritise the car park project in the 2024-2025 council budget.
It has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Collier that the motion be amended. I'll just read that. That council acknowledged that the community has petitioned in 2010, 2017, 2018 and in 2021, the petition and that the car park upgrade and extension has already been capital listed for 14 years. It is a terrible state, it is in terrible state and is a... Sorry, councillor Johnston, something, hi, thank you, high priority for repairs and upgrade. As such, council will prioritise the car park project in the 2024-25 council budget. I'll now put the amendment to, sorry councillor Johnston, I didn't give you an opportunity to speak to that amendment.
Yes, thank you. Look, I'll be brief, this is very straightforward. Three years of not actioning the petition is bad enough, but 14 years of no action is appalling. This car park is in a terrible state, it needs to be properly fixed. And every few years, council comes along when we complain and they fill the potholes and in another year's time, it's bad again. People cannot fit into the spaces, the line markings are appalling. Council in its own report acknowledges it doesn't meet any disability standards. It is just in a shocking state. It services a huge community in the southwestern suburbs and the level of neglect by successive Lord Mayors has been appalling. And councillor Davis has been the chair now for quite a number of years. And the fact that this report is trying to hide the truth of council's inaction is appalling. So this amendment makes it clear to the community that council has failed to act over and over again. And it says to the community that this project will be prioritised in the 2024-2025 budget. So maybe after 15 years of waiting for some car park repairs and an extension, that maybe people in the southwestern suburbs of Brisbane can get some action. Now, I know councillor Hutton will vote for this, and if she doesn't, I'll make sure her community is aware of this. I know that she came into my ward on several occasions with the LNP candidate and supported him and talked up council's actions in Tennyson Ward. Now, her community are major users of the soccer field and the pool. And yet councillor Hutton won't support an upgrade to this area, unless they're going to vote for it, perhaps it'll surprise me. But I'll be making it very clear to the Oxley community and the surrounding communities that the LNP councillors will not vote for an upgrade to this important community sporting facility. It services a huge area and it is absolutely outrageous that after 14 years, council can't even acknowledge that it's been capital listed for that long. It can't acknowledge there've been multiple petitions. And then it says, ring Nicole Johnston? Well, guess what? I hope they do, because I will give them this speech. I will tell them councillor Hutton voted against fixing up their local pool car park. And she's a chairperson of this council, she voted not to do this. I will tell them that councillor Davis, the parks chairperson, voted not to do this. I will tell them all the councillors in the LNP side who won't support our local community. And I know councillor Hutton's sitting over there thinking she's all safe and fine, her vote went up. When the community in her area that use this pool and sporting facility know that she does not support the upgrade, I think they'll start asking questions about why. Why? I'd like to know why she's voting against something that's been waiting 14 years for funding. Why is the chairperson of council, she thinks a project that is beneficial for her area doesn't deserve to have any funding? Well, guess what? I hope they ring me. Please encourage them to do so, because they'll be told the truth about what's happened here, about this council's three-year neglect of this petition, where it sat on somebody's desk and it was hidden away and everyone's, oh, it's just councillor Johnston, we don't care. Three years, three years. Is there an apology from councillor Davis? No. So let's get some truth into this report. Let's tell the community that it was capital listed 14 years ago. And let's make sure that they know it's a priority in the next council budget. I urge all councillors, including councillor Hutton, to vote for this.
Is there any debate? If there is no debate, we'll move to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against, say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
A division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and 18 against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Resume debate. Councillors will now resume the debate on the report. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on two items in this report. Firstly, in relation to item E that we just did division on. I just want to say that I agree with councillor Johnston that I've never seen, I've never in my 22 years here seen where a councillor's office is put into a petition report and that it's seen as acceptable that you contact that councillor. So I think it's very unprofessional of the officers and very inappropriate. And I hope that the CEO or whoever's standing in for CEO is on to that, because I just don't believe that is professional or appropriate. I know councillor Johnston very well and councillor Johnston represents her ward extremely well. I understand that the city and council operate separately to the political side of things. That if that's the case, then each of these car parks should be looked at on their own merit and should be done on their merit, not done on the affiliation of the councillors in this chamber. We have all...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Hutton.
Chair, I unfortunately think that councillor Griffiths is imputing motive about our council officers taking the side of the administration. And I think that he should be really considered about what he is saying about these officers, because they do a really great job and they actually take a lot of time to scope these projects. So I would just ask you to draw him back to the report.
Thank you, councillor Hutton. Councillor Griffiths, yes.
Yeah, I won't withdraw what I've said. No, I maintain that it is highly inappropriate for the officers to, whoever's written this, and this is meant to have come from an officer. If an officer's written this, it is very inappropriate to be taking a political stand like this in this chamber. And I maintain that and I would ask the administration to look at what you're doing, because you approved this through your chairperson's office. So I think that it's not appropriate for that to be happening. Now, also, I would say that, and the way council is meant to be running is that we are meant to be allocating resources based on need across the city. That's been the whole spin of the way council has been running for last at least three or four years. And it's not happening. It is grossly not happening. So I just, the spin doesn't match the rhetoric and it also doesn't match what's being presented here. And I think if this car park needs to be repaired, repair it. That's your job. Stop defending the undefendable, the indefendable, it's just not good enough. I also congratulate councillor Johnston on your result. You got a magnificent result. Residents support you hugely. 76%, 76%. So a lot of people would be very envious of that, councillor Johnston. And keep representing your community and keep doing what you're doing, because you're doing well. In relation to the petition here, in relation to a petition in my ward, that has to do with park naming. Local Neighbourhood Watch Group has come up with this name, the Meeting Place. It's for a place name in Niandry Bar Park. Niandry Bar Park was named last year after work and consultation with the local Indigenous people of the area. It's a great name. We had the premier out there for the launch of the name of the park. This picks up on a previous use of the park, which was as a meatworks. And hence the pun in the name, Meeting, as in M-E-A-T rather than M-W-E-T. I support this going forward, I support what the residents are requesting and I think it will be an improvement to the area. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item E. When this petition was brought to the committee last week, I voted no to it. And that was actually without the historical knowledge. And some of the reasons that I voted no to it were literally based on the response, which is basically, we'll list it again or contact councillor Johnston, which I thought was incredibly... Like it flagged for me as something that was not usual. And the reason why I said no to it is there, you know, even in my ward, there are non-DA compliant car parks, especially around Dunlop State School. And there are non-DA compliant car parks and areas just across all these wards. And accessibility is incredibly important to residents in our wards. And prioritising, making sure that car parks become DA compliant is actually some of the work that we should be doing. Noting that, you know, people use these areas. And people need to use these areas. I know for my ward and the car park, the Brisbane City Council Car Park near Dunlop State School, there's been challenges with children that have disabilities being able to safely access the car park there. And, you know, when I spoke to council about that, they told me that it was just too expensive to fix it. And here, we don't get that. We don't get that clarity that it's too expensive to fix it. Instead, we get an answer that we know the result of, which is it will be listed but will not get funded. And so that's why I said no to it. Since then, finding out the information that this has actually been a very long journey for these residents since 2010 and that it was listed multiple times. I am thankful that I said no to it. Because I think that full information was missing and that full information is actually really needed for us as councillors to review petitions and the information about us and make decisions. And so with this amendment, look, I voted no then, I'll vote no now. I think residents deserve an answer when they ask for petitions. I think we should be transparent with it. If we're not going to do it, we tell them without them finding out in July when the budget is done. And I think these residents have waited too long for this. And it should be a priority in making sure car parks, pedestrian crossings, making sure footpaths are DA compliant, especially bus stops also, is an incredibly important part of the job that council should do and we should make priorities in them. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Davis. Oh, sorry, councillor Collier.
Thanks, Chair. I wasn't actually planning on saying anything, but I think just given the circumstances, to have some brief comments on the record. Just to be very clear, what has transpired over the debate today is this council outlining that their priority is to not listen to local communities. And we can talk about the inappropriate manner in which they continue to target female councillors who don't comply and don't agree with the administration's agenda of not listening to their local communities and how inappropriate that is. Like the precedent is there not to have a local councillor's phone number as the contact point. And you can read through other petitions being, petition responses being presented in not only this committee report but across the board. And quite often, there are, as appropriate, relevant officer contacts. So it is extremely strange to me and out of the ordinary. I certainly don't recall ever seeing that. And I guess to the point of this today, you know, this report and the way in which the debate has transpired, it shows an extreme lack of respect. Lack of respect for the basic services that local communities are crying out for, for years and years and years, and a lack of respect for the councillors who are elected to represent those communities and advocate on their behalf. And I think that's really disappointing. And so, you know, to sit on this side of the chamber, looking over there, I'm seeing other councillors that will happily agree and vote yes for what is evidently a poor decision. And so I urge any councillor on the other side of the chamber to speak up and actually speak up within your own group and say, this is wrong. This is a wrong way of going about business. And I do recall the last time a local councillor, maybe on the administration's side, did that and the appalling treatment, that is not okay. That is not okay. And when we, you know, while we are having a national conversation about the way that women are treated, I have watched in this place the way that women are treated and it is out... is outrageous.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Howard.
I'm just wondering where this is in the report, just so.
Yeah, so- Point of, point of order. Yes, it would be in the-
I haven't called you yet councillor Johnston. Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, it would be in the committee report where the Deegan Ward councillor's phone number is not included and yet he's a man and my number is included and I'm a woman. And I think that bears some scrutiny.
Councillor Johnston, that's not a point of order. Councillor Collier.
Yeah, back to, back to item E and the debate surrounding it. I do just want it read on record that I think the way that this whole thing has transpired has been absolutely atrocious, absolutely atrocious, the way that the administration has disrespected this local community on the content of the response and the inaction, but also the way in which they have disrespected the local councillor.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Davis. If there is no further debate, I shall move to the vote. Item A, item B, item C and item D. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Item E, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Nos, against say no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division. Division.
A division has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, nos to my left. Please ring the bells. Please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and eight against.
The motion is carried.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2024 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Adaman and seconded by councillor Dixon that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 23rd of April, 2024 be adopted. Is councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Members of the City Standards Committee last week were treated to a presentation on the Compliance and Regulatory Services Branch, most commonly referred to as Cars, by Officer Kirsty Cronin. This presentation provided a comprehensive overview of the vital work carried out by the Cars officers on a daily basis within our community. The branch is organised into three key areas, all collaboratively working together to ensure compliance and deliver the highest level of value to the Brisbane community. Kirsty delivered a high-level briefing on each of these work areas, shedding light not only on the opportunities council has moving forward, but also on the regulatory challenges posed by other levels of government. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the hard work and dedication demonstrated by our Compliance and Regulatory Services officers. It is your dedication or their dedication that upholds the high standards visible to our residents across Brisbane every day. Petitions, Chair. The committee considered two petitions during the meeting. The first petition requested that council resurface Yoronga Memorial Car Park, Yoronga, adjacent to Frederick Street and Anally. As the petition response notes, council officers completed an onsite investigation and have listed the project for consideration in a future capital works budget. The second petition requested that council seal or provide regarding, sorry, regrading to Lake Manchester Road, Kolo. The local councillor, who just happens to be me, was supportive of the recommendation to list for consideration a project to seal the unformed section of Lake Manchester Road at the intersection of Kolo Road and Cameron's Crossing Road as part of council's future road construction programme. These responses received unanimous support from the committee. Now I leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item B, the petition regarding Yoronga Memorial Car Park. And it is version 2.0. And I don't think it really will surprise anybody. It's not quite as bad as the last committee, so I'll be brief because this is the second time that we have petitioned here. And about 14 years ago, council resurfaced half of the car park between the Bridge Club and the War Memorial in Yoronga Memorial Park, but they did not seal the eastern end of the car park that leads up towards the Croquet Club. So half the car park, or about three-quarters of the car park is sealed and the other half becomes a boggy mess every time it rains. It's a hugely busy car park. It is for the Bridge Club, the Croquet Club, the War Memorial and South Rugby, as well as community events. Now, this is the second petition, the other one being, I'd say 10 or 12 years ago, where again, this was capital listed. So it's not the first time that it's been capital listed. It is incredibly important because the people who use this car park are elderly veterans. And we've just had ANZAC Day and I don't want to see anybody fall over or trip. I want to see vehicles not trashing the park because they have to park in the mud or, you know, partially on grass. So the car park, it says, this report is just also woefully inadequate. I mean, I take councillor Collier's comments on the earlier matter. It is disrespectful to our community when you say the car park is utilized by the Stevens Croquet Club. I mean, the thousand rugby people who come for every home game use the car park. Use the car park. The 200 people who come and play bridge use the car park. The 5,000 people who came to ANZAC Day use the car park. I mean, you'd think this car park was for a tiny little croquet club and never got used if you read this. This is just appalling work. I, I just, I just, yeah. And this one's a year old. This one's a year old. A year old. It also does not respond to the previous requests that we've made. There's no history. I should be thankful, I guess, that my phone number is not in there. My poor staff don't have to get these phone calls and have to explain to people over and over again. So I should be thankful that that's not in there. But what is appalling, and councillor Hutton's not here, I don't know why she's not here. I don't know why the Chair is not here. You know, early on in her, you know, term and she's not here to explain why it's taken a year to respond. Number two, why this says the car park is utilized by the Croquet Club. And no one else. I mean, does this council, does this, do you know, we sat through councillor Marks, through you, Madam Chairman, we sat through that review three years ago where we said that we were going to create sort of these big super agencies, there'd be no more local asset services here and there and everything would lift because there'd be central control. Apparently, the people in town don't even know where this is and they don't even know who uses the car park, how often, how many people, where it is. And the only response that is in here is the car park is utilized by the Stevens Croquet Club. Yes, yes, they do use it several times a week, but they would be one of the smallest users of this car park. Now, when this matter was first listed, sort of, you know, 10, 14 years ago, and I think it was around 2010, 2012, I was actually presented with plans when we had local parks offices, might not, maybe 10 years ago. They came in to see me and they said, here councillor Johnston, here are the design plans. We're going to upgrade around the War Memorial, we're going to upgrade around South Rugby, which is adjacent to the War Memorial, and we're going to upgrade the pool car park on Park Road, on the other side of Yoronga Memorial Park. So they got some plans drawn up back then when it was first capital listed. Not now, when it was listed 10 years ago, the plans got drawn up. And again, this has languished through neglect. This is one of the oldest memorial parks in Australia. Not Brisbane, not Queensland, in Australia. It is a magnificent park with a really significant history. It services thousands of sporting and recreational users every week, not just the Stevens Croquet Club, of whom I am their patron and very supportive of what they do. But the neglect by this administration, not only in councillor Davis's area, but councillor Hutton, who can't even be bothered to be here for the debate, is extraordinary. It does not reflect the history of what's happened with respect to this matter. It does not reflect the lack of action by council. It simply says, as per usual, that council has listed a project. Well, it did that 10 years ago. How do you list, councillor Adaman, please tell me, how do you list a project that's already listed? Because this is the problem. This is again, a deceptive document because it does not clarify or record what has actually happened.
Yes.
Neglect, inaction, failure to fund fairly across the city, failure to respond to all the community groups, including those from multiple different sports and multiple walks of life. That's this legacy of the LNP administration. That's why no one wants to run, no one wants to make an effort, and the best you can do is send councillor Hutton out to promise a dog park in Oxley with an LNP candidate who you don't look after. I, I don't know why you are doing this. I do not know why. The level of neglect now in Tennyson Ward is extraordinary. Even if an LNP councillor came in next term, you could not do in one term the work that needs doing because of the level of neglect by this LNP administration. And councillor Collier is, you know, right, particularly on one thing, and this is how I feel about it. I use that car park. It is disrespectful to me, but more importantly, it is disrespectful for the community when you treat their petitions with such low regard, so little thought and so little recognition of the situation that is occurring. Thousands of people use this car park every weekend. It is, it has been in a terrible state for a long time. And back then, when we did have local parks officers, they promised they'd come back and do the second section the next year, but they never did because I was no longer a member of the LNP. That's my view on why it happened. So I just say to the LNP councillors, your behaviour here by failing to include-
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, on relevance, councillor Kim's family are waiting up in the gallery for a maiden speech and we've heard, we've heard councillor Johnston ranting and raving for the last 30 minutes.
Thank you councillor Murphy. It's not a point of order.
And now we're hearing about a time in the LNP, it's not in the report.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Can we just move on?
Continue councillor Johnston.
I thank councillor Murphy for the mansplaining to people who are watching at home, where he stands up and says, no, no, that woman over there can't speak about these issues in her portfolio. She shouldn't be allowed to speak about the issues in her portfolio.
Point of order councillor Howard. The councillor did not say that at all. Please let the record show that councillor Johnston is misrepresenting what was said.
Thank you councillor Howard. Councillor Johnston, please go back to the report.
I was speaking to the report, thanks very much, until councillor Murphy decided he wanted to mansplain and to interrupt me and to make it even longer councillor Murphy. I'm aware that- So, Madam Chairman, point of order.
Yeah.
Councillor, councillor Murphy has just been shouting across the chamber, grow up. Councillor Murphy is the one who decided to interject. Councillor is the Murf, councillor Murphy's the one who's making inappropriate comments across the chamber and I would ask that you rule his behaviour out of order.
Councillor Johnston, I would ask you to get back to the report and finish your speech. There's a lot of people in the room that have been calling out during the meeting, as you know, including yourself. Can you please go back to the report?
So just to be clear, Madam Chairman, my point of order is councillor Murphy has been calling out, grow up, across the chamber, which is inappropriate conduct and I would ask that you rule his behaviour as disorderly and take appropriate action.
Councillor Johnston, I am asking you to finish doing your report and if you would like me to call out every single councillor, every time they call out the chamber, I will start doing that.
Madam Chair, I've raised a procedural point of order under the rules and I'm entitled to a ruling on it. What you're telling me is to get back to what I was saying. You have not addressed my point of order and the inappropriate conduct is telling another councillor to grow up. Now, I am grown up, I am making relevant debate, that is inappropriate behaviour and Madam Chairman, I am asking that you take action as it's inappropriate behaviour.
Thank you councillor Johnston. And I advise councillor Murphy and I just advise all councillors in fact in this room that they will not call out across the chamber. Or I will, every time they call out, bring them, bring them to their, I will let them know that they are not to call out across the chamber. Okay? Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair. So just to be clear, a male councillor shouting-
One moment councillor Johnston, I haven't asked you for your point of order. Point of order councillor Johnston.
Just to be clear then, Madam Chairman, a male councillor shouting grow up to a female councillor on the other side of the chamber is appropriate conduct in your view under the meeting's local law?
Councillor Johnston, I've made my ruling already. You asked me to make a ruling and you are continuing on the same point of order. I've made my ruling and you heard it.
Right.
Would you like to continue with the report?
Yes, yes, Madam Chairman. Yes, I would. And I can see, I can see very clearly that the behaviour of men in this chamber is not changing at all. And perhaps now councillor Mackay has gone, but perhaps councillor Murphy's about to take over.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Howard.
It is very inappropriate for councillor Johnston to be referring to councillors who are no longer in this chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Councillor Johnston, can you please just stick to the report? Thank you.
Thank you. And I know councillor Cara Cook would have called out this kind of behaviour as councillor Collier has as well. And I know that the LNP council like to refer to councillor Cook as they have tonight on many occasions as well. So I thank councillor Howard for defending the double standard of the LNP in this chamber here tonight. Now, I won't say any more, I'm sorry to the family of the new councillor and friends up there. It should not have gone like this, that's for sure, but the community I represent are appalled at this council's inaction when it comes to fixing important community facilities in our ward. And as you can see here tonight, and I'm sure this will happen to your beloved family member and friends, they will try and shut you down at every opportunity, but we have to be strong for our communities. Thank you for supporting her and I hope you enjoy her first speech.
Are there any further speakers?
Councillor Adaman? I will now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community and the Arts Committee.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, 2024 be adopted.
Moved by councillor-
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 23rd of April, 2024 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Chair, I know it's been quite a while since I've been able to do an around-the-world so that the chamber can be aware of the most fantastic things that happen in and around Brisbane with my portfolio. And I thank councillor Lisa Atwood for seconding my report because she's a fantastic deputy- because she's a fantastic deputy, as were you, madam chair. And I know that not only you, but every councillor in this chamber loves all of the fantastic things that happen in and around Brisbane. And so I think that it's very important that we talk about those amazing things that have been happening recently. The first one I want to mention is the Cube Effect Live. And that was held on the seventh of April at the Tivoli in Fortitude Valley. We had nineteen finalists who performed back-to-back sets across one afternoon, showcasing their performance skills and battling it out in the hopes of impressing the expert panel ahead of the allocation of awards and prizes. Now, more than six hundred and fifty people attended the event and it was a great opportunity for me to do a bit of fangirling with Wormgirls. Now, I know that, I know that you've heard me speak in the chamber of another band that is my favourite and I'll come to them shortly, but Wormgirls were amazing and it's fantastic that we now have a new group that I can talk about in the chamber because they truly are superb. So madam chair, through you, everyone will now have the opportunity from the first to the thirteenth of July to vote in the People's Choice Awards. And that will be fantastic. And of course, the Cube Effect Awards Nights will be held in August. But I have to share with all of you that there's going to be a Cube Effect wedding. Now, there's no date set for the wedding yet, but excitingly, the Cube Effect programme has welcomed its first ever announcement of an engagement of Hayley Marsden, the Cube Effect twenty nineteen alumni, and Dan Sugers, the video production crew from JMC, who produced the videos that year. So isn't it wonderful that romance can be found at the Cube Effect? So Hayley and Dan, we wish you all the very best for the future. Now, madam chair, just moving to a few of the other events that have happened across the city this week. Of course, everyone in this chamber attended many, many Anzac Day services. And what a fantastic opportunity it is that we can really commemorate all of those who gave up their life for this wonderful lifestyle that we all enjoy. And it's very reassuring to see so many services now across our city and also the parade, to get so many people who are now attending that so, you know, so eagerly. It's, it's fantastic. I also want to mention a new Indian tradition New Year celebration that I attended just recently and represented the Lord Mayor at Roma Street Parklands. And yet again, it's wonderful to see all of the multicultural communities come together so that we can celebrate all that this wonderful city of Brisbane has to, to offer. We, we also had the, the Brisbane Comedy Festival and that, that was launched just on the twenty sixth of April. And again, fantastic to see that not only are we using our wonderful powerhouse, but we're also activating the Tivoli, we're activating the Princess Theatre. And it's, it was again fantastic to get a taste of what the Brisbane Comedy Festival will have to offer. And I encourage everyone to get along and support this homegrown festival. As we all know through you, madam chair, festivals are doing it pretty tough. And so for a, a homegrown Brisbane Comedy Festival to be doing so well, it's just brilliant that that is still happening. We also, oh, one of the things that I most enjoyed was going along to the Arts Collective Exhibition Opening Night called Red on, on the twenty fourth of April. And I was able to purchase yet again, just a small offering of a local artist to, to go into the, the ward office. And just so you all know and on the record, I paid for it myself because it's so fantastic, but I love it. And it's wonderful again to see emerging artists being on display at the Royal Queensland Arts Society, yet again, one of the oldest art societies that we have in Brisbane. I also was absolutely privileged to attend on behalf of the Lord Mayor, the Queensland Music Awards on the seventeenth of April. And again, a fantastic way that we can make sure that our emerging artists are being put on display in the beautiful Fortitude Music Hall. Wonderful event, fantastic talent. And we are just so proud of all of our homegrown talent here in, here in Brisbane. I also attended the Gopio Dinner on behalf of the Lord Mayor. We had a Spring Hill Community Day. And again, that is what this city is all about. It's about supporting those who are less fortunate than we are. And the Spring Hill Community Day was bringing together many of the organisations around the city that do so much good work for everyone. And then finally, in my around the world, I want to talk about the Apple Mac Lions Club twenty year anniversary. And I think councillor Huang, you might know some of the wonderful people that attended that. Their twenty year anniversary of helping people all over the world. Everything from all of our Pacifica countries, we had representatives there. We had the, the consul from Tonga that was there, Curtis, who was an amazing speaker. And it was fantastic yet again to recognise the work of a Lions Club doing so much work in this particular area. So madam chair, it has been quite a while and I apologise that that was perhaps a little long, but there is just so much that happens in and around Brisbane. So we just love everything that we see and do. So, so all right, I'd like to move the report of the committee meeting held on the twenty third of April. And that report had one petition, a wonderful presentation from the divisional manager providing an overview of the Lifestyle and Community Services Division for the benefit of our new committee members. It was great to have our branch managers in attendance as well. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of the officers within our division who worked tirelessly to deliver the many important services they do for the residents of Brisbane. And I will leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Is there any debate? As there is no debate, I'll put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thanks madam chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty third of April, twenty twenty four be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty third of April, twenty twenty four be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Before I get to the committee report, which I'll keep very brief, madam chair, I'd like to respond to the question asked by councillor Collier of councillor Hutton in question time regarding the real-time data. Last year, as many of you would recall, this chamber agreed to publish real-time data on its website as part of the in-progress website and digital upgrade projects. I can advise the chamber that the website and digital upgrade projects mentioned in the motion still do indeed remain in progress. Turning to the report, madam chair, like other committees, we have new members on our committee. So we took the opportunity to give a brief to councillors on the remit of the Finance and City Governance portfolio, and I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Is there any debate? As there is no debate, I put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item six on the agenda. Councillor Howard, would you please move the motion?
Um, yes madam chair. I'm, I move that this council notes its deep disappointment with the federal government's decision to use the five hundred bed Pinkham Bar facility as a part-time training facility rather than temporary crisis accommodation that council unanimously called for six hundred and forty-five days ago and calls on them to reconsider their position.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Atwood, that this council notes its deep disappointment with the federal government's decision to use the five hundred bed Pinkham Bar facility as a part-time training facility rather than temporary crisis accommodation. Council unanimously called for six hundred and forty-five days ago and calls on them to reconsider their position. Councillor Howard.
Uh, thank you, madam chair. And I will be brief because we have heard from the Lord Mayor earlier this evening. And I think that it, it just needs for me to say that it has been two years now since, since this side of the chamber called on both the state and federal government to put the four hundred million dollar, five hundred bed Pinkham Bar quarantine facility to good use. Now, madam chair, it's just astonishing the news that we received earlier this week. And there really is so much that I can say about this motion because ultimately, the decision is so disappointing. I just want to say, the recent announcement by the federal government is a really demoralising decision for the hundreds of people that are living in tents and cars and a severely disappointing outcome for the community support providers who were willing and able to assist in the activation of this facility. I ask all of you to deeply reflect on this recent decision proposed by the federal government and urge you all to support this motion.
Is there any debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you chair. I rise to speak on this motion and note our support for it. I'll say at the outset, we support it. We know we're facing a housing and homelessness crisis in this city. And we supported the motion that councillor Howard talked about previously. While we recognise this is not an ideal location for housing of any kind, crisis or long-term, it is there, it was sitting there, it could have been used, it should have been used. We do note that decision, we support the calls for that to be reviewed. But I also think council can and should be doing more as well in this space. We shouldn't just, as we talked about the housing and homelessness strategy earlier in the meeting tonight, leave that at just one action on the homelessness side and one action on the housing side. Housing being Karilpa and homelessness being Pinkham Bar. So to that end, and I'll do this very quickly, I'd like to move an amendment. The amendment, the current motion before us today, I'd like to insert the words after reconsider their position, insert the words. Council also resolves to increase its support for crisis accommodation, including increasing the pathways out of homelessness grant to five million dollars annually for the next four years, investigate lowering rates for properties held by registered community housing providers and audit all council-owned land for suitability to partner with community housing providers to deliver more housing.
Is there a...
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier, that the motion be amended. To read... Uh, to have after the words reconsider their position, insert the words, council also resolves to increase its support for crisis accommodation, including increasing the pathways out of homelessness grants to five million annually for the next four years, investigate lowering rates for properties held by registered community housing providers and order all council-owned land for suitability to partner with community housing providers to deliver more housing. Councillor Cassidy.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I've been on the record suggesting these very things last time we had this motion here to council. We're often asked for ideas, suggestions, actions that we are proposing. Well, here is some that I think we can all support, particularly leading into the budget that the, this council will consider in June. There are real and practical actions that this council can take to assist community providers, whether they be crisis accommodation or community housing providers to deliver roofs over people's heads.
Is there any debate? Okay, I will now put the amendment to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Councillors, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Okay, clerks, please read the results.
Madam chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and fifteen against.
The motion is lost. Is there any further debate? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you madam chair. Sorry, let me just find my speech quickly. I too rise to speak on this motion because quite frankly, I am not sure how this happened. How anyone thought a part-time training facility was more important than providing safe accommodation and support for our residents when they needed it most. On behalf of so many children, women and men who are not sure where they will sleep tonight, who are not sure where they'll eat tonight, I am frustrated and I am sad because if we choose to accept this, what kind of society are we? Now, everyone in this chamber knows Pinkham Bar was not the perfect solution, but it was pretty close. Over the past four hun, sorry, six hundred and forty days, we heard many excuses as to why Pinkham Bar won't work. But the Lord Mayor has said in the past, we need to find solutions and he did. The former premier said, it's too far away from public transport. The Lord Mayor said, we'll help with buses. The former premier said, it's too close to the airport and people won't sleep. The Lord Mayor debunked this and said, the rooms are soundproof. The former premier said, the rooms don't have kitchens. The Lord Mayor highlighted, it has a huge commercial kitchen, which is an improvement from the parks, car parks and current hostels and dodgy hotels where the current state government is happy to house our Brisbaneites. Pinkham Bar has safe, lockable rooms, interconnecting bedrooms for families with their own bathrooms. It has health facilities, car parking, green space. We had charity, we had a charity organisation who were ready to run it. And Minister Scallion recently announced it would only cost five hundred and fifty thousand to make some modifications to make it fit for temporary accommodation. I wonder how much the Australian Federal Police will spend converting it into a part-time training facility. Pinkham Bar would have provided a safe space for those who needed it most. We know this city and country has ser, has a serious rental crisis. We know professionals who earn good wages can't find accommodation, like Mr Stapleton, who was a forklift driver for twenty years and recently lost his job due to his, due to his company downsizing. Now, let me read a little excerpt from a recent Courier Mail article and see if you would like to endure what he has. The fifty-nine-year-old male has been living in the park since October twenty twenty-three after he was unable to find accommodation. "I left the tent for a few hours and when I returned, all of my possessions had been thrown out, covered in dirt and damaged, Mr Stapleton said. My t-shirt had been smashed with eggs, my barbecue had been broken and the string on my special guitar had been snapped and a knife was hanging out of it, he said. Mr Stapleton's tent and personal belongings were completely destroyed. His tent had been slashed through, leaving him unable to use it. This is the second time in six months this has happened to Mr Stapleton. The last time, everything was destroyed as well. More homeless residents like Mr Stapleton are trying to find a job, but it's hard when your belongings are constantly destroyed. It's hard when you don't have a bathroom. It's almost impossible to get Centrelink payments when you don't have an address and it's impossible to find a rental when you don't have a job. Other residents spend months in their car or a tent. It is so much harder to help them return, sorry, to help turn their situation around. We need that Pinkham Bar facility. We need to help five hundred more Brisbaneites right now because there are no other ideas on the table. But if we don't stand up and act now, it will only have effects... Um, sorry, it will not only have effects on residents right now, it will affect generations to come. And Maslow's hierarchy of needs sums it up very simply. At the base of this hierarchy are psychology ne, sorry, psychological needs like food, water and shelter, the essential for survival. Without these three basic necessities, individuals struggle to progress to higher levels of fulfillment and their mental health, employment start to see cracks as they often turn to fly to fight mode. In such circumstances, it's difficult to focus on anything beyond meeting the immediate need of a safe place to sleep and your next meal. Now, looking past humanity and trying to help our community, homelessness extends far beyond the individuals experiencing it in our communities, posing significant challenges to public safety and the wellbeing of vulnerable populations, especially our children. When people are pushed into these situations, they may resort to desperate measures to survive. This can lead to an increase in petty crimes, theft and even more serious offences. Addressing homelessness isn't just about providing shelter, it's about creating safer communities for everyone. Now, let's turn our attention to our youngest victims of homelessness, children. Imagine being a child without a stable place to call home. Every night becomes a struggle for safety... Every night becomes a struggle for safety and security. Homeless children are exposed to violence, substance abuse and a lack of access to education and healthcare. The trauma they experience can have a lasting effect on their physical, emotional and cognitive development. As a community, we cannot afford to ignore this plight for our children. They are our future and they, sorry, and their wellbeing is intertwined with the health of our society as a whole. By addressing homelessness, we are not only providing individuals with a chance to rebuild their lives but also create an environment where children can thrive and reach their full potential. Being homeless is more than just a lack of shelter. Homelessness represents a profound failure in our society to meet the basic need of our fellow human beings. As a council, we are pulling every lever we can to help encourage more homes. Our council officers are out there every day working to connect people sleeping rough with the services they need. We have removed infrastructure charges for community housing providers to create future supply, but we cannot solve this problem alone. Housing is a responsibility of the state and federal government. Ending homelessness requires a multifaceted approach. It is not an easy task, but it is one that we must undertake. So I will call on the federal minister to reconsider her decision and approve and support Pinkambar for a temporary accommodation facility because using a 500-bed facility for a part-time training facility for the Australian Federal Police is not the best use of Pinkambar. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Point of order Chair. Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner break for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned when all councils have left the chamber. Is there any further debate? Councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on to this motion. In the midst of the worst housing crisis since the depression, we are here playing with people's lives. The Pinkambar facility has been stated by numerous organisations, working on the ground with rough sleepers as a quick fix that is inappropriate. And I understand when the Lord Mayor and other people speak about the facility, that they are suggesting that it's not for the most vulnerable, with the highest needs and the largest challenges. But anyone who is facing homelessness or is currently rough sleeping is highly vulnerable. The facility in Damascus Barracks has no support services or amenities near it. The closest shops for groceries are 6.4 kilometres away. It would take 49 minutes to get there by a bus, about an hour and 20 minutes by foot. The closest health centre is 3.5 kilometres away. About 50 minutes walk, about 40 minutes on the current public transport. The site is 15 kilometres away from the city and even any increase of frequency in buses would be a challenge for some of these highly vulnerable people, particularly when we talk about the three things that were mentioned earlier by councillor Atwood, shelter, food and safety. And most importantly, the Pinkambar facility would only be an addition to crisis and temporary accommodation and people get stuck in it, or much worse. And had this council had any connection or trust with rough sleepers, they would have heard this immediately, on the ground, as I've heard time and time and again when I'm in Musgrove Park and Karilpa Point and most recently, which is new, very new, for the rough sleepers in Kangaroo Point. And the reason why rough sleepers, grassroots organisations and non-for-profit organisations have stated that Pinkambar is not the solution is because Pinkambar is in a place where people would like to live long-term, medium-term or even short-term because it is isolated with no services and no connection to local community. It's hidden away. And the reality is as today, that rough sleeping, which is often a hidden symptom of our government's failures, is now today present across our city and we need to face this head-on. What people need is homes, permanent homes. We need major investment from the ALP state government who have failed for decades and major policy intervention from the LMP council. Some examples of this intervention include a vacancy levy, which is present in cities like Vancouver and Barcelona. Currently, there's approximately 10,000 vacant homes in Brisbane. Other things that council could look at, which I've mentioned previously in this chamber, stopping rezoning caravan parks. Brisbane City Council could lead the way or lead the advocacy for inclusionary zoning from a state government level. And of course, last year, the Lord Mayor mentioned the conversion and refurbishment of city buildings, which I'm incredibly supportive of and is a movement that is happening worldwide as the housing crisis continues. And we haven't had an update with that, but I am hopeful of an update on that soon. Of course, the other thing that council has decided not to do is invest in social housing and I've talked about this before, actual investment in social housing, whether it's through housing providers or otherwise. The Green Stand firm in highlighting councils in action in a worsening crisis and the use of quick fixes and inappropriate spaces as solutions. I believe we can do more than pass this motion. I believe it's appropriate that we should talk about doing more and challenge in different ways and in different solutions how we can find new solutions to what is visible in our street. And we can do more in this chamber, we can be more proactive, but only if we are all willing to do so.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you Madam Chair and I thank those who entered the debate. Through you Madam Chair, our council officers work every day, every single day to connect people sleeping rough with the services and the accommodation that they need. We know that Pinkambar might not be the perfect solution, but it is better than a family having to sleep in a tent. And in late 2022, the Lord Mayor and I toured the facility with community service providers to assess the suitability of the facility for short-term crisis accommodation. I'm just going to repeat that, short-term crisis accommodation. Now, obviously, there are some people who don't think that it's the right solution, but the people who toured with us felt that with some adjustments, with some minor modifications and the presence of wraparound support services, this 500-bed facility had the potential to be used to give residents a dignified housing option to allow them to get back on their feet. So council subsequently committed $1 million for any state-led activation of this facility just for that purpose and numerous meetings were held between council and the state government representatives to determine how this funding support would be called upon. Brisbane City Council was also not alone in its belief that this facility had the potential to assist those sleeping rough across the city. Numerous community support organisations echoed our long-held belief that the facility had the immediate potential to support our cities most vulnerable. In fact, the Salvation Army even went as far as to put their hands up and said that they were willing and able to operate this facility to provide respite for the residents who so desperately needed it. Voices across the city have, for almost two years, called on something to be done with this facility to assist those who need it most. So through you Madam Chair, I support this to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. I will now put the motion to the vote. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Are there any petitions?
I did have a petition, but I think I've taken it off my desk, I'm so sorry. Can I submit the petition next week?
Yes.
Apologies, apologies to the residents.
Any other petitions? Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? There being no councillors rising to their feet, are there any matters of general business? Councillor Kim.
Chair, I would like to start by acknowledging the traditional owners and pay my respects to their elders, past, present and future. I rise to speak in this chamber today to first thank the voters of Callumvale. It is such a great honour to represent local families before Brisbane City Council. I promise that I will always be your faithful servant. I want to thank the former councillor for her 16 years of service. I also thank all the councillors who were successful at the election and have the privilege of representing their wards. Chair, I've always found the air quality to be better on the south side. I love the south side and I love our local community. This area has been my home for as long as I can remember. I was born at Sunnybank Hospital 23 years ago and I've lived in and around Callumvale ever since and I have great memories playing just outside this chamber in King George Square as a child. Each Sunday, my grandma, or Hulmoni, would take me to the Korean service at the Anne Street Presbyterian Church where I was baptised and afterwards she would buy me balloon animals. There were penguins, flowers and even swords. My favourite thing to do as a kid was to go for walks in the local parks with my grandparents, my Hara Baji and Hulmoni. They came to Brisbane from South Korea in 1987 looking for a better life for our family. I want to thank them and my parents for all the sacrifices that we could grow up in Australia, the most beautiful country on earth. It is really special to me that I will now be able to look after the very same parks in which I played with my grandparents growing up. My family still live here today and I saved and saved to get my first home just 10 minutes away from them. A local Callumvale resident actually just stopped me recently and he asked me if I was the little girl walking with her grandpa, Mr Kim. I want to protect and preserve these special places so that more kids can grow up with beautiful family memories like this. Our local area is the most diverse in all of Queensland and I'm conscious of the fact that many local families grew up in places where even something as simple as a walk in the park or riding a bike was an unimaginable luxury. I know that's the case for my friend and former Stretton State College captain Fahima Amati. She's actually up here in the gallery today. As a refugee to Australia, she grew up under the shadow of the Taliban and the regime in Iran. When she moved to Callumvale, it was the first time in her life she felt that she could control her own destiny as a human being. I'm here to represent Australian families from all walks of life, no matter their background. Ordinary families working hard to get by, to pay the rent or pay the mortgage. Local police working to keep our community safe, firefighters and nurses and frontline workers without whom we couldn't function as a society. Chair, I stood for council because out of all levels of government, it's local government that has the most direct impact on the daily lives of Queenslanders and residents of Brisbane. The practical decisions we make as councillors go to the very heart of what it means to live in our city. If you go to your local park with your kids, you're going to a park maintained by council. If you catch a local bus, you're jumping onto council public transport. If you're driving down a local road, there's a good chance you're driving on a council road. This is particularly acute for growing areas like Callumvale. A growing area requires growing services and council needs to pay special attention to the growing outer suburbs of our city. Callumvale is home to some very big schools, Stretton State College, Callumvale Community College, Islamic College of Brisbane and the growing Polaris State School. These large schools face growing challenges with pick-up and drop-off zones and parking. Council approved developments in these catchment zones, so it's not okay for us to simply say it's a school issue. We need to improve pick-up and drop-off zones and promote active transport. Chair, there's another critical issue facing all levels of Australian government. It's recently said that Sydney faces a future with no grandchildren. I fear Brisbane will head this way if we don't act as councillors to make sure enough housing exists for young families to start their lives. During my campaign, so many young people would come up to me and ask, how will I ever afford my home? How will I ever be able to afford a family and start to raise kids? I say this to the people of Callumvale, as your council candidate, I pledge to work for our local area. As your elected representative, I will work every day to ensure that our local area gets our fair share of resources and I will work every day to make sure that our local area has a future with children and grandchildren. Chair, my family never discussed politics at the dinner table. Growing up, Australian politics seemed inaccessible to me. It seemed like something that happened in distant offices. It seemed like something that everyday people watched but didn't participate in. Then, at the age of 17, I walked into the office of my local state member, the late Duncan Peg. I was there to ask more questions after doing a model UN competition, but I walked out at the meeting with Duncan's offer of a summer internship and then a part-time job. Over the years, Duncan looked out for me and helped me to understand that everyday people like us can have a say. A year and a half after I first walked into Duncan's office, he took me aside and shared the news of his diagnosis. It's been almost three years since his passing and we miss him every day. He was our guardian angel in the campaign and I know he's watching down on us now, doing the numbers from heaven whilst sipping on endless strawberry milkshakes. All these years later, I still keep in touch with the Peg family. His brother Graham baked cookies for our campaign volunteers and every month, I still find myself heading out to the windswept beaches of Surf's Paradise where like a Kit Kat bar by the spot where ashes were scattered. I'll just have a drink of water. I can't wait to hang a picture of him in our office and I just wanted to thank his parents, Lindsay, Graham Senior, Graham Junior, Cameron Grant and Lachlan. Didn't think I'd get so emotional. What I appreciated most about Duncan's advice was his practical nature. He wanted to empower people, but he never did so in a tokenistic way. He got straight to the point, never fluffing his words. He actually lived his values and this is true of the entire Griffith Labor University crew he built up. I owe my gratitude to James Martin, Clinton De Bruin, Merrick Foley, David Shaw, Manique Bilanowski and Kerry Carlin. Like me, they all graduated from the Duncan Peg School of Hard Knocks and Tough Yakka. It meant never giving up when the going got tough. It meant endless door knocking and roadsideing with Krispy Kremes and it meant strategising with him in the hospital when he got sick. I know that the next generation of the school is already on the rise. I particularly want to thank everyone in the room here today, Fahima Amati, the Amati sisters, Sumesi Manu, Ariyan Sharma, Hudson Denning, Joel Kattinger, Nick Trin, Nick Schlobim, Juan Duque, Dear Bichoy and Sam Zoll. Many of these young Labor members came door knocking with me every day on the campaign and also Hudson Denning. I also need to make a special shout-out to Tang and Michael Murray. They were there for my first Stretton ALP branch meeting when I was 17 and Tang still makes the best chili paste in Queensland. They were out for me every single day on this campaign and when my grandpa passed away shortly before the passing of Duncan, I told Tang I didn't know what to do with his Frank Sinatra vinyl albums because I didn't own a record player. So she bought one to give to my grandma. Tang and Michael, like the rest of our Stretton branch, you're all family to me. Thanks for burning incense in our new office, feeding me every day on early voting and giving me a big melon for good luck. Also, just during our dinner break, she's given me a dragon fruit that she's grown from home, so thank you very much. I was particularly lucky to also have significant support from our local Labor-elected members. I want to thank Treasurer Jim Chalmers and Speaker Milton Dick, Graham Perrett, as well as two local state members, Minister Leanne Enoch and James Martin MP. And a big shout-out to Jared, Lucy, Steve and Charles as well and all of our Brisbane Labor Council team. And thank you also to our Queensland Labor Party President John Badams and State Secretary Kate Flanders, United Workers Union's Gary Bullock, Greg Moran, Connor Wood, Jake Arulow and Tom Smith and Jess Pugh. When Duncan passed away, he tasked Greg with making sure I didn't fall out of line. Thank you Greg for all your help. The support I received from party members and friends across the city was overwhelming. I particularly want to thank my campaign manager, Adam Chapel, Katie Lucinda Chapel, my organizer Hayden Shepherd, branch president Sharif Kiyakis and his wife Gada, David Pass, Ali Kadri, Thalia Edmonds, the Manu family for all their generosity and all their fruit, Gail McPherson, Adrian Cremon, Josie Christensen, Courtney Talbot, the McDona family, the Glarus family, the Pavlu family, the Ansari family, Scott Taylor, Tony Morris Casey, his beautiful wife Alice Hampson and their lovely daughter Violet. Their two dogs Victor and Vixen were very important to us on the campaign and I'm sorry I broke your dog lead by trying to fix a vote when Emily Kim badge on it. I also thank my brother Ben Kim. I'm sure as a software engineer, he never thought he'd be handing out a how-to-vote card on election day. To Troy Spence, Connor Rutherford, Matty Sellers, George and Sander Addison, Sachin Lad, Andrew Landy, Sandy Thomas who used to work for the former councillor for our area, Kevin Bianchi, Sandy Look, Nick Thatchi, Yui Singh, Seb Page, Ewan Tienan, Alex Smock, Riley Bowman, Tim Page, Shindha Singh, Hardy Wagner, Terry Gobetz, Troy Reeves, Prakruti and Lucky, Tari Danbo, Nora, Ariana and Phil Mansell-Clark, Portia Allison, Martin Bogar, Sarah McDonald, Kate Alaway, Lisa Wilder and Penny. Thank you Jazz Singh as well, RTBU delegate Will Cra and the Van Deeren Road locals for your help. And I'm nearly there. I also want to thank our community leaders, so we had Tarat Achal, Ben Chen, Shaji Thekenath, Esther Stewart, Professor Vicky Vought-Browning, Lewis Leo AM, Callumvale Lions Club, Paula from Carraworth Forest Protection Society, Master Jet Lee, Jitendra Deo, Johnny Shin, Phil Eslo and Joe Lin for all of their help and advice on the campaign. In the past few weeks since I've been declared, I've met lots of wonderful people. In the past few weeks since I've been declared, I've met lots of wonderful people like Steve and Harry from Forest Lake RSL and Sunnybank RSL. I look forward to working with everyone. And once again, I thank the people of Callumvale for their support. As I said before, I will always be your humble servant. And Chair, I want to finish my speech with a little shout out to an Australian girl in the Callumvale ward by the name of Chloe. Chloe is a grade four student at Polaris State School. Her dad Ben is from Singapore and mum Emmy is Vietnamese, who's here in the audience today. Chloe gave me a very sweet handwritten card on election day explaining that she and a group of friends at school had all asked their parents and grandparents to vote for me. I was so touched by this and Chloe told me that she and her friends were really excited to see somebody that looked like them running for election. I hope that in some small way my election can inspire other young Australian girls like Chloe to know that they too can grow up to have a say in the future of this country. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kim. Are there any further items of general business? councillor Givney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to commend the Anzac Day commemorations held within the Winter Manly Ward last week and I wish to share these significant events with the chamber. It was my privilege to be invited by three local schools to participate in their Anzac Day services. Each service displayed a profound level of respect and individuality. Notably, Iona College orchestrated a dignified ceremony uniting the entire school community. A highlight was the haka performed by the New Zealand students, symbolising the enduring camaraderie between Australian and New Zealand soldiers. At Bayside State College, retired Captain Collins Drawn shared a touching narrative of his involvement in identifying fallen soldiers found in the Fremelles Mass grave. This act of remembrance brought closure to families decades after the war ended. Equally inspiring were the thought-provoking questions posed by student leaders at the morning tea regarding council and the Brisbane city. Winham State School orchestrated a touching service featuring a moving performance by bagpiper Vicky alongside handmade wreaths, a thoughtful gesture prompting reflection on sustainable practices for future remembrance services. On Anzac Day, these tributes were echoed by the Winham RSL and Manly Lotter RSL sub-branch, each hosting two services and a march. Noteworthy was the dawn service at Darling Point hosted by the Nasho's Bayside Branch, set against the breathtaking backdrop of the sunrise over Moreton Bay. Special thanks to President Wayne Norris and padre Thomas Andrew OAM for the organisation of this service. Gratitude is owed to the Rotary Club of Winter Manly and the Quota International Winter Manly for their early morning preparations and hospitality, ensuring that over 400 were fed for breakfast at 4:30 AM and more than 100 for morning tea after the 8 AM service. Over 2,500 attendees gave their respects at the mid-morning service this year. It was heartening to witness the growing involvement of school students at this annual event alongside community groups such as the Bayside Brass Band and Gumdale State School Choir and the talented Bugler school student Camilo Suarez. Special thanks to Ness Noble, Rex Coombs and Harry Pregnol and the Committee for their tireless efforts. The pre-dawn service at Winham illuminated by the full moon was a profoundly moving experience, enhanced by the Moreton Bay College's choir rendition of Abide With Me and the national anthems. The mid-morning march and service attended by local business leaders, by numerous school groups, community groups and sporting clubs underscored the enduring significance of Anzac Day within our ward. The Winham RSL pipeline ensured the service was one to remember. My attendance as a special guest at the Winham RSL and annual Anzac lunch was a humbling experience surrounded by veterans, community leaders and volunteers united in paying respect to our fallen heroes. In closing, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the dedicated volunteers whose tireless efforts ensured a seamless execution of these commemorative events. Their unwavering commitment embodies the spirit of remembrance cherished by our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers? councillor Collier.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I just want to talk on two items of general business. First, just also want to mark on the record my appreciation to the Belimba and Districts RSL sub-branch and the Norman Park National Servicemen sub-branch as well for their efforts in commemorating Anzac Day. As I'm sure many other people in this city and even in this chamber, I am the granddaughter of a World War Two veteran. And he served and came home and never spoke a word of it. And so, Anzac Day to me, in particular, and having volunteered with the Belimba and Districts RSL for more years than I can remember, is an important way to continue to tell the stories of those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, of course, but those who came home and paid that sacrifice too. And so, as a local councillor, I, like others in this chamber, you know, have the immense privilege of representing our community at local services, whether that's, you know, on the day or the week leading up at local school services. And I do just really want to commend all of the young children locally who will continue on that legacy and keep telling those stories. We have to tell them so that we never forget and remember the importance of the decisions that we make when we have positions of power. And I think that is an incredibly important segue into the next thing that I will talk about, which is just the general conduct of us here today in the chamber and as local elected representatives. I for one have found it very confronting and as many of you know, I'm not a stranger to politics. I have been around it for a long time. But when I step foot into this place sometimes, it makes me feel very disappointed on behalf of everyone's community in the way in which we behave and I think that we can do a lot better than that. You know, we negotiate with each other in good faith, I feel. And tonight, I feel like that was not respected. I'm really disappointed. You know, we have a new councillor whose voice matters and her story matters. We are here to hear that tonight and as we have just heard, I just said to councillor Kim, you know, was there anyone in the community who didn't support her? Because that was an incredible list of not only party people, her family, but her community who helped her be the strong community voice that she has ultimately been elected on to deliver for her area. And so to have her family here tonight and be disrespected by the administration, you know, we could do so much better. We really could. Our voices in this place are an incredibly powerful thing. And to have your family and friends here tonight to witness you becoming the new councillor for Callumvale and put your remarks right onto the record, Emily, councillor Kim, sorry, deserves respect. And on this side of the chamber, we will respect and I guess from the events, not only just earlier tonight, but throughout the course of today, we are having a national conversation about the way that we treat each other as people. I hope that everyone here tonight will consider that very deeply.
Are there any further speakers? councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak of the Anzac Day spirit in the Walter Tail Award, with many significant events occurring throughout April in the lead up to Anzac Day. Beginning early April, I attended an event at the Tuong Cemetery for the Stone of Remembrance and the Cross of Sacrifice. Special thanks to Peter Collins, the convener of the Stone of Remembrance Centenary Committee and also to Tuong RSL. We were joined by His Excellency Governor General, the Honourable David John Hurley and Her Excellency Mrs Linda Hurley, marking the centenary of the official unveiling of Australia's first national Anzac memorial. Additionally, in the Walter Tail Award, Brisbane City Council has delivered the National Defence Chaplain's Memorial Grove in Tuong's Anzac Park. This memorial grove, for the first time ever in the Commonwealth, honours the gallantry, dedication to duty and sacrifice of those who humbly serve the fighting men and women who keep Australia free. In the Walter Tail Award, I'm also fortunate to have a family business called National Medals in Turinga. I popped in to visit Greg to have my grandfather's service medals replicated to wear for the upcoming Anzac services throughout my ward. Anzac Day, through stories of times past, connects us to our community in so many meaningful ways. And for me personally, my grandfather Cecil Croll served in the 2nd 14th Battalion in Papua New Guinea and Borneo until the war ended. On his return from World War Two, he served as president and secretary for 28 years for the Redcliffe RSL sub-branch and he was awarded life membership. I wanted to recognise the importance that RSL plays on Anzac Day above all days to recall those who have served in war and who did not return to receive grateful thanks for our nation. Tuong RSL sub-branch dawn service was heartfelt and well-attended. Special mention to Leila Colter, a year six student leader from Indrapilly State School who wrote and shared a very personal and moving poem, The Twenty-Fifth of April. I also witnessed the incredible support of the community who attended the Sherwood-Indrapilly RSL sub-branch commemorative service at Keating Park in Indrapilly. And I was delighted to also attend the West Tuong Bowls Club service with thanks to Roz and Lieutenant Colonel Brian Vens Retired for his significant address and sharing stories of coast watchers like Arthur Reginald Evans and Ruby Boy, who was the only female coast watcher. In addition to the services attended on Anzac Day and across the week, I attended many school commemorative services including Brisbane Boys College, Indrapilly State School, Quasmatt being Queensland Academy for Science, Maths and Technology and Indrapilly State High School. And I had a representative also attend at Fig Tree Pocket State School. Anzac Day in 2024, I witnessed so many come together to honour our brave servicemen and women who continue to protect our country while also remembering the fallen soldiers for their courage, sacrifice and legacy. Thank you to all who helped commemorate Anzac Day in the Walter Tail Award. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I rise to speak on three items tonight. Anzac, the Anzac spirit in the Deegan Ward, council support for homelessness services and bad faith negotiations. Our giggles over there has already started. I might start on that actually and I guess, I guess, I guess the lesson, the lesson I've learnt tonight, Chair, is that you don't negotiate with a bloke that won't even look you in the eye and won't do it in good faith. A very strange experience in the lead up to our dinner break tonight in that councillor Collier approached the LMP whip and asked a simple question whether we thought councillor Kim would speak before the dinner break or after the dinner break. Simple question, yeah, and no reflection on what councillor Dixon did. She went and asked the question and I was approached. I didn't approach councillor Murphy, but councillor Murphy approached me, Chair, with a deal that he had decided to offer in that if Labor councillors didn't speak in general business, that councillor Kim would get to speak, given that your family and friends are all here, would get to speak before dinner and given what he had said earlier in the meeting that he thought it was disrespectful for councillor Johnston to have been speaking, I took him at good faith, Chair. And so I spoke for, and he said to me, the other important bit, I guess, Chair in all of this, and I want to put this on record, is that one of three things would happen with the motion that councillor Howard moved. Either the LMP would move through it very quickly, this is what he put to me, they would pull it entirely or delay it to another week. None of my suggestions, they were councillor Murphy's suggestions. And I said, sure, no worries, we won't speak during general business. And we proceeded to the motion. I spoke for one minute and 23 seconds on the motion. Cut short my comments significantly in good faith and then all of a sudden, we go to dinner. So whatever, if that was always their intention, Chair, that's fine, but just don't lie about it. I think that's the, that's the issue here. And I guess I take what councillor Collier said earlier in her remarks in general business, that this meeting in particular, but when we reflect about how this council has operated with this LMP majority for a long time, it's not been in good faith. I've never sought to negotiate the closure of a meeting early with the LNP. I've always been happy to go to dinner if that's in fact what we want. We asked a simple question about that and then to have councillor Murphy concoct this sort of deal that he proposed to us and then pull the rug and send us to dinner, whatever, it's going to skin off our nose. But it's just very bad faith negotiating and disrespectful to councillor Kim's family and friends who came along tonight to witness what is quite an amazing, amazing achievement for you in being elected and to be able to make that contribution and demonstrate to all of us here what your community already knew as to why you should have been elected the councillor for Callumvale, given your significant community support. So terribly disappointed. We're always often disappointed about decisions that are made in here in this place. And I really don't, I've been in here for nearly nine years now and have seen how councillor Murphy operates, Chair, and he does treat this like high school politics. But for a lot of us in here, for a lot of us in here, we seek to make a bigger contribution than just ourselves, our own personal enjoyment in getting one up on other councillors. I've often talked about the need for us having a higher purpose in here than our own self-advancement. And I'm sure a lot, and I do think a lot of LMP councillors think that way as well. But what is for sure and certain is that councillor Murphy is not one of those. So I want to expand on Labor's ideas that I put forward in my amendment to the motion that we had prior to general business. As I said very briefly then, and I'll say it now, we're often accused of coming in here and complaining and not having ideas and not putting things on the table. Well, we did that tonight. We put some ideas on the table and they're not our ideas. These are ideas that have come from service organisations working in the community housing and homelessness sector here in Brisbane. And they've come from organisations that toured the Pinkenbar site with the Lord Mayor and with councillor Howard. Now, they had some face-to-face time with these people, as have I, in seeking out these solutions in the community so we can bring them here to council to try and address these issues. Funding for the Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant is critical to these organisations. It's been stagnant now for years and years and years at about a million dollars or so a year. Those community organisations are crying out for more support to be able to deliver more services immediately, to deliver more crisis accommodation immediately. That's something this council can do. We could have supported it tonight, but the LMP chose not to. The Lord Mayor has an opportunity to fund that in his budget and I certainly hope that he will. Investigating lowering rates for properties held by registered community housing providers. Having discussions with organisations like Q Shelter, who represent, are the peak body representing community housing providers. One of the big issues that they face in being able to invest in more stock, invest in building more stock and taking advantage of those infrastructure charge discounts of which we have supported in this place, is lowering the rates burden that those organisations have. So in any given year, that goes up and down, that discount, but in recent years, it was about 5%. So sure, that's a generous 5% that these organisations were getting on their rates bill from this council. However, anything more than that, every dollar that is saved in these organisations paying rates to council means more houses are built. More houses are built, our rate base is expanded as well, this pays for itself. And what it does is support affordable housing here in Brisbane. That's another idea. An audit council-owned land for suitability to partner with community housing providers. This is something that we see in councils all around Brisbane. This is something that we see in councils all around Brisbane. We've seen the Moreton Bay Council not only lead the way in terms of financial support packages, but also in gifting land, whether it's through long-term leases or freehold transfer of land to community housing providers. Because turns out that's a council that prioritises homes and prioritises housing for vulnerable people much more than this council does. So there's just a couple of ideas. If we had a fulsome debate, if we didn't have councillor Murphy concocting some fake deal to try and stop us from talking, we might have had a more fulsome debate about that. But there's some ideas. I'll throw them over to councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor to, to think about and to talk to Q Shelter and to talk to community housing providers, because they are screaming out for more support. And my message to them, and I've had some great conversations with Fiona and Jackson at Q Shelter and will continue to, we will continue to, to support you on this side of the chamber and bring your issues to council and fight for you. In summing up, this contribution to general business, I just want to talk about ANZAC Day in my community. So in the lead-up to Thursday, we had an amazing display of that ANZAC spirit at our, at our schools right around the Deegan Ward. I was lucky enough to attend half a dozen or more, I think, services at schools, which were all student-led from primary schools with contributions from prepies right through to our high schools in the Deegan Ward. And when you hear those veterans or serving personnel talk about what the ANZAC spirit means to them and those key elements of that, of service and of mateship, of the fair go, we see that spirit that they talk about and they hold so dear coming through in that next generation of residents here in Brisbane. And I think that's a wonderful thing. And to culminate, that amazing display of community spirit on Thursday at, for myself, at the dawn service at Sangate, which was simply amazing, the largest crowd certainly since 2014, since the 100th anniversary of the landings at Gallipoli, with thousands of people flooding into Memorial Park and paying their respects for those people that not just served, but particularly those that made the ultimate sacrifice, the 100,000 Australians over the last 100-plus years who served our nation. And then to see, both at Zilmir and Sangate, the thousands of students, of veterans, of community organisations and everyone from every walk of life marching very proudly to pay their respects not just to those that served, but also the community that they love. It was a very special thing, not just to witness, but to be part of as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Murphy?
I just rise to respond to councillor Cassidy in respect of deals and negotiations. Councillor Cassidy has once again misled the chamber in this place. We did not approach him to offer any deal in respect of councillor Kim's first speech. Councillor Collier approached councillor Dixon to ask that we prioritise her speech, that it be done before dinner and that we get through the business of the meeting so that we could do that before dinner. We offered to do that on the proviso that they breezed through with no further speeches to get to that first speech. And we said we hadn't, it's true, we said we hadn't decided what we were going to do with the motion.
Councillor Collier, you were heard in silence. I expect you to do the same for other people in general business. Point of order, councillor Collier.
I just, under what standing order in the meeting's local law is it for you to pass judgement and make commentary to me directly on matters that councillor Murphy is speaking to?
Councillor Collier?
Could you please provide?
Yes, I can. You are not supposed to be speaking while other councillors are speaking, and that is what I am pulling you up on. Okay? You were heard in silence when you did your general business, and we expect councillor Murphy to be able to have his say. It's not open for you to debate it. Councillor Murphy?
So do you think, Madam Chair, that if councillor Cassidy was very keen to move an amendment on the motion that was coming, a notified motion, but he would have said at that point, actually, I'm really keen to move an amendment to that motion which requires a speech and a vote, so we probably can't agree on this, we'll have to go to dinner? Do you think he said that? Or do you think he said, yeah, I agree, let's do the deal? And then just went and did the amendment and now is trying to retcon things, blame us, you know, all of the personal attacks on me, which I don't mind, by the way, councillor Cassidy, I'm used to that from you. Do you think any of that was disclosed? No, no, it wasn't. And so that's how we arrived at dinner. Because councillor Cassidy, unlike you, who often leave the chamber and go away, our clerks, who are here, cannot. They have to stay there, and they require breaks. And so we were willing to move 15 minutes for them. And then when you moved an amendment, you clearly went back on whatever deal you thought we had. And so we went to dinner. But I'll say again, the only reason that we went to dinner is because your side of the chamber continually enables one councillor to disrupt the business of this place. One single councillor, constantly seconded, constantly enabled to just waste hours of all of our time on pointless speeches and personal attacks that do nothing for her community and go nowhere. So maybe you want to consider how you waste that time rather than coming in here and attacking me.
Further speakers. Councillor Strong.
There he goes. I've got a big enough voice, you'd probably hear me anyways. Anyways, I rise to speak on a couple of items, two, two events, and, and I want to reflect on a, on a petition that I wasn't able to speak to because we had a deal. But then councillor Murphy says he doesn't do deals, but then he just said he does deal, so anyways. I'm confused, but anyways, I'll let that go. Right, in regards to, I'm wearing a Vietnamese heritage flag, or something that represents the Vietnamese heritage flag, because I want to speak about the day of mourning that occurred at 2pm at the Freedom Place at Anala.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Marks.
Sorry, it just, there's some roadworks happening just out the window here, which is why I actually can't necessarily hear what councillor Strunk's saying. Just interested what this was meaning and can't hear you. Sorry.
Sorry. Councillor, yep, use that big voice that you said you have into the microphone.
I'll try to overcome that. Jackhammers. Okay, yes, Madam Chair, I rise to speak on the day of mourning, a, an event that happened at Anala at Freedom Place. And I'm wearing a scarf that actually represents the heritage flag of Republic of Vietnam. Anyways, I got permission from my leader to attend the day of mourning, and there was three levels of government that were there, Senator Scarf from the, from the federal government, Margie Nightingale, the new member for Anala, her first morning day service, and I'm sure will be many, many more to come, and, and myself, on behalf of, well, as, as a local councillor. So this is the, my eighth day of mourning, and of course, it's to commemorate the horrendous losses of, of the Vietnamese people after 1975, where they, they had to flee Vietnam because of the communist regime that was taking over. And over 3 million fled over a period of time. And of those, 1 million, 1 million perished, which is just phenomenal when you think about it. But as I say, this is, this was my eighth services that I attended to as a councillor. And it was well-attended, even though it was on a Tuesday, you know? It's a working day for a lot of people. But there was a great turnout from community leaders and organisations and community leaders. We had three serving inspectors of police there, which is the best inspectors I've actually seen there at the service, which is really good. So the police service turned out in numbers as well to, to pay their respects to the, to the Vietnamese people who lost their lives fleeing, fleeing Vietnam to other countries like Canada, United States, obviously Australia, and others. And I'm very fortunate to actually look after a ward that actually has a substantial Vietnamese community, because they're some of the hardest-working and some of the most generous people that you will ever come across. They fundraise on a regular basis for floods, famines, you know? They did a huge fundraiser for Ukraine back about 12, 18 months ago. And, and they continue to do that work because I think they appreciate the fact that they live in a very safe and tolerant country now, one that they can thrive, and, and they just show their respects for those other cultures that are doing it tough as well. And I just want to pay tribute to also the chapter who runs this, runs the event every year on the, on the 30th of April every year, no matter what day it's on, Dr Kwan Buoy, who's the president of the chapter, who is, is a, you know, is an icon in my community. And, and I'm sure is very much so right across Australia as well. He's very well-known and very well-respected. Turning to ANZAC Day, I, it was my turn to attend the Forest Lake ANZAC Day service. I normally alternate between the Anala service and the Forest Lake service because they do them at the same time every year, even though we try to convince one of them to maybe change it a little bit. But anyways, now they, they still do, and both of them have parades as well as a service, which is really challenging to the local constabulary because they, they've actually got to obviously manage people moving up and down roads and cars and vehicles and all that sort of stuff as well, why, why, why people are trying to get elsewhere that may not be participating in the, in the services. So I do thank them very much for what they do. Now, this is the first year that Forest Lake RSL sub-branch undertook a dawn service, 5 o'clock, or 4:30, 5 o'clock dawn service. They also did the morning service as well, and then they do a dusk service as well over at Dogs Queensland to commemorate the dogs of war. The first service, they didn't know what it was going to be like, it was their first one. The dawn service, there was near 400 or 500 people there, which was quite amazing. And then, of course, we, they, then, then, you know, at about 9:30, when, when the morning service took place, it was packed. Literally, I don't think there was a square inch of space left. There was standing room only in a lot of cases. And, and it was just so well-supported by the community. I was just so proud to be part of that. It's been big before, but it was never been as big as, as it was on ANZAC Day this year. And then, of course, the dusk service over Dogs Queensland as well, again, was very, very well-attended. It's in the Maruk Ward, actually, and we, thank you for the... Yes, I represented the councillor for Maruk, I think? Yeah, anyways, no, it was, anyway, so you can imagine, three big services for, you know, a small volunteer group in the RSL that actually pull it all together. And sadly, the president and the secretary, Steve Ford and Sharon Ford, had a bereavement, a close family bereavement the night before. And they just nailed it anyways. They just, they sucked it up and then they pushed through and they got there. And, and I just pay tribute to them because this is their last year as president and secretary. They're stepping down for the next generation, as they say. And we're looking forward to that transition as well. But they, they've really done an enormous amount of work with the RSL over the last six, seven years now, establishing a facility at Boundary Road at Waco there and where the Nashos are. And, and they, they've just done some tremendous amount of work over the last five or six years as, as a couple, along with, of course, a great supporting group as well. Now, finally, I want to talk a little bit about this petition that actually wasn't, I didn't speak to during, during the committee report. And this was the library and community centre that the people from the GAP were looking for support to actually establish a new library and a community centre at the GAP. Now, we know the, the GAP, within the GAP ward, there is one library, which is not a huge library, it's about a bit over 700 square metres, which is a little bit smaller than my Anala library, considering that some of the libraries can be up to 3,000 square metres. So that just gives you an idea. And yes, the current library, which as I say is in the GAP ward, is at one end of the, at one end of the ward. And at the, if I can paint a picture, the GAP ward is a very elongated ward. And the library that's currently there, that's currently been serving the community for years, is at very, one end of Waterford Road or Waterworks Road. And, and of course, at the other end is some kilometres down the other end of Waterworks Road as well. So it's a fair distance, and of course, that road is a very congested road at times. So it's not easy to traverse from one end to the other, especially during peak hour. So I thought it was a fair, fair request that the, that the community asked in their petition. And I would just hope that the local councillor may take this on board and maybe in his budget submission, maybe request a, 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 a new library and community centre to be established within his, within his ward. Interestingly enough, the comments at the end of the council officers, they only talked about the library.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired.
They didn't talk about the community centre. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
There's no one on that side. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just rise to speak on four issues. One is congratulations, second one is in relation to issues, third one is about accessible footpaths, and the fourth one is about the RSL. I just want to first off congratulate councillor Kim. Well done. It's good to have a new person on the team. And you've certainly got a lot of energy and a lot of enthusiasm, and I, I hope you have a fruitful career of service going forward. It can be a really rewarding job, and I hope you find it that way. Although, maybe up to tonight, you won't think that. So wish you all the best. The second thing is I want to talk to a number of issues related to field services. And I raised issues about field services last time. And surprise, surprise, one of the issues I raised was about four seats, public seats on footpaths that haven't been able to get action for a long time. They got fixed like that this week. So thank you for getting them fixed. It's amazing what a little spotlight will do on, on an issue, and it gets resolved or fixed. So I'm going to try again for another issue this week and just see if we can get some magic happening. And councillor Hart, and I know that you're, you've got a big job ahead of you. I know it's a big job restructuring and looking at what's going on there. But this issue concerns me. It's about lighting of a bus stop outside the Princess Alexander Hospital on Ipswich Road. And you would think that this was a remarkable request. Two sides of Ipswich Road have bus stops. People regularly use them who use the bus stops. I regularly drive past there and see people sitting in the dimness of these bus stops. I put both requests in. I've also had residents raise the issue of the lighting at these bus stops. Put both these jobs in. One got done like that, one outside Target, new light. The one outside the hospital remains dim. It's very hard to see people there, but you can see their shadows. And the response, I've pushed it back to council three times, is no, it meets acceptable standards. And it's like the officers are saying to me, to us, it makes sense to upgrade this light. To me, I drove past it last night, looked at it again, it was dim. A lot of rubbish under the seats, maybe council officers can't see that. But the fact that I'm having to raise in this chamber that we have a dimly lit bus stop on Ipswich Road outside a major hospital is just stupidity. It is just stupidity. It should be a service that we just provide and fix up. And if the organisation was running well, it should just happen, like it happened outside Target on the opposite side of the road. So I will hand that over to the administration and see whether you can get the light outside our major public hospital on the south side upgraded. The electricity's there, just got to change the light so that it's brighter for the people at the bus stop. We'll see. See what a week will deliver. I'd need to also raise the issue of accessible footpaths. I didn't mix this up with the debate earlier today, but I don't know if many of you are aware of it, but I certainly haven't heard any LMP councillors raise it, but it's certainly, I'm told, an issue right across the city, that we went and graded, upgraded all our bus stops, but we actually didn't connect our bus stops to the footpaths. And we didn't provide ramps at those bus stops because the legislation didn't require us to. So the common sense approach didn't click in and we've upgraded these bus stops with no ramps and no connections to the footpaths. Now, in a council that operated on common sense, I would say that is crazy. That is bizarre. And I don't understand how we have all these executives sitting up in, I call it Qantas House, they're all sitting up there having a lovely time, but how that they can allow this craziness to happen. So I am requesting in the upcoming budget that we put money aside for accessible footpaths to connect our accessible bus stops to the nearest footpath. I had a lady come and raise that with me. The officers came back to me and said, you have to pay for it. Can I tell you, I am, the only footpaths I build now, and the Lord Mayor did, he was fair in what he said before, I do build footpaths. The only footpaths I'm building at the moment are accessible footpaths. They are only for people with mobility devices. I'm not doing it because someone wants to walk, I'm doing it because someone needs to get their accessible device somewhere. So I think we actually need to look at our footpath funding, I agree. The funding we have for footpaths and parks is for stuff you want to do. But stuff that people require, we should be just doing it as a right. I think we should be doing it as a right and that fits. I had a look at our accessibility plan, it actually fits with council's accessibility plan. So instead of me having to choose which disabled person gets a footpath next year, I actually think I should be able to go to council and go, look, here's the need, here's the proof, we actually need accessible footpath here. And I have to say, in my area, I've got a lot of working class area, but I've got a huge amount of industry. And let's face it, the state government, the federal government, we all want people to be at home, living at home, doing more in their homes, being accessible at home. We then need to back that up with the service. And many of those people also work. So they work industrial areas, they actually need a footpath to be provided from the bus stop to where they work. So I really would plead with the Lord Mayor and plead with the development of the budget that we put some money aside for fixing this problem and have it as an ongoing issue into the future. I'll certainly be working with my residents on that because I think we need to catch up with the times there. And the final thing is, I just want to raise, I was at an RSL event and I really enjoy them, it's good to hear other councillors talk about it. At Salisbury, there's a very large event there, that land is held in trust by the state. And as part of the draft Maruka Salisbury Nathan Plan, it is proposed to become a park. I mentioned that at the, at the event that was there. The RSL are very keen to work with council to ensure that they have continued involvement with that site. So when the Maruka Salisbury Nathan Plan comes up, I think I'd like to have a meeting between the administration, myself and the RSL so that we can find a way forward so that they don't feel like they're being pushed out of this park by council. That's all I have, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further speakers? As there is no further business, I declare the meeting closed.